Counselor Smith.
Here.
Counselor Rozicka.
Here.
Mayor Quill.
Here. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to this great republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
You remain standing for a moment of silent prayer or reflection. Thank you. Please be seated. We will start out, as always, with our public to be heard. If you'll read our rules and regulations, please.
At this time, we will open the public-to-be-heard portion of our council meeting. As a reminder, pursuant to council rules of procedure, prior to addressing council, speakers are asked to state their name, address, and affiliation, if any. All comments should be addressed to the entire council and not to individual staff members. Your remarks should be limited to three minutes and concern only issues involving the city council, city government, or matters of general city concern. Issues involving specific employees of the city should be directed to the city manager outside of this meeting. All speakers before council should observe commonly accepted rules of courtesy. Personal attacks or abusive language will be ruled out of order.
Thank you. I just, Lady Lattimore.
Good afternoon. I'd just like to congratulate all the winners from the primary: Mr. Smith, Mr. Graney, our Debbie McCormick. Mr. Cuddy is here. Congratulations. I'd just like to also say that the 9/11 ceremony the other day, I really appreciated the fact that we were all there together honoring our beloved personnel that passed away and the civilians. I have to go to a county meeting now. Mr. Mahonek, good Democrat, is head of the Health and Human Services. I hope that Democrats and Republicans can work together. I know that during the primary battle, there was a lot of conversation in regards to who's a good Democrat or who's a good Republican. Hopefully, it's for the citizens of this community that we work together, both the city and the county, whether we're Republicans or Democrats. So I hope that Mr. Mahonek doesn't, as chairman of the Health Services, doesn't get too upset with me for being a little late. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lattimore. Is there anyone else desiring to be heard this evening? One second.
Good evening, City Council, Mr. Mayor.
I have a letter from the City Council.
Okay, sure. Then you can, your name and address for the record, please.
Kevin Cox, 127 Genesee. Mr. Mayor, since the time is short, as I well know, I just wanted to read the letter I handed up into the record. Mr. Smith, by the way, I'm glad to see you're feeling better.
Me too. Thank you.
Dear City Council, in addition to the issues raised in our September 5, 2013 letter, the Jim Napoleon letter dated July 26, 2012, the Jim Napoleon affidavit dated February 18, 2013, and the Daniel Vavone affidavit dated March 15, 2013, there remain major health and safety issues for the proposed theater with respect to State Street and the rear alleyway. Appendix D of the state fire code requires an unobstructed fire apparatus access road at least 26 feet wide, since the proposed theater is over 30 feet high. Mr. Lynch and Mr. Fusco admit in the secret documentation that this issue is a secret issue, but defer the resolution of this off until the issuance of a building permit. This is a clear violation of the secret law. Furthermore, the representations made by Mr. Hicks, Mr. Diggart, and Mr. Tanner that the project is exempt from state fire code requirements is false. In fact, in taking the position, they're essentially admitting that State Street does not comply with fire code. They claim that a fire apparatus access road cannot be installed because of the location on the property, topography, waterways, non-negotiable grades, or other similar conditions. They further claim that State Street is a pre-existing street that is not owned by the County College and that they have no authority to make changes. Both of these claims are completely without legal merit. First, the city council is lead agency on this project and does, in fact, have authority to make changes to the configuration of State Street. In this coordinated review, the city must ensure that State Street is in compliance. Secondly, State Street is a public street which is too narrow and obstructed by parking on both sides of the street. Changes can easily be made to the configuration to bring it within compliance. As a matter of fact, the college has been given access to work beyond its property boundaries well into State Street, tearing up the sidewalks, portions of the street, placing crane pads down, and essentially shutting down State Street during the construction. And I've attached drawing L-101 from the revised plans, which clearly show that the college plans on doing just that. And as I note in my letter, I'm not aware of any city resolution that authorized the college to do this. The college, with its partners, the Musical Theater Festival, should spend the necessary resources to make the proposed theater safe. There should be no question as to fire code compliance, especially in light of the fact that the college's own students are involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Mr. Davis.
Mayor, City Council. Some time ago when, oh, sorry, Norman J. Davis, Housing Commissioner of the City of Auburn, New York, a great city. Not too long ago, our former police chief, Gary Giannata, warned this city council of the impending drug problem that's festering our city, and believed he hit it right on the money because it is infesting our neighborhoods. I've gotten calls and I've watched myself here. So I'm hoping that this council, or even the new council that starts up in December, can really figure out a way to address this problem because the people in our neighborhoods don't deserve this. The biggest investment they have are their homes, and they deserve to come to a neighborhood that's free of drugs. And I just wanted to bring it back to council's attention to what our former police chief did say, that it is increasing in this city. And I hope and pray that council can do something about it as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else desiring to be heard this evening?
Good evening. My name is Justin Huffman from the Camardo Law Firm, 127 Genesee Street. I'd like to put all of you on notice right now that should the city approve a condition-negative declaration tonight, without first conducting the soil and groundwater testing that we have been pleading for for weeks now, each one of you will be in violation of both the appellate division's June 8, 2012, order and Judge Polito's May 9, 2013, order. I am passing out a letter to all of you right now on this issue. The appellate division found the potential for a significant adverse environmental impact based upon the contamination found in soil vapor tests. Again, at least 23 volatile organic compounds have been detected at the site. Now, we're not talking about UFOs here, as Mr. Fusco seems to mock our concerns. I must say here, there have been two secret declarations on this matter before, and we've been successful in getting both overturned at this point, despite the counseling from both Mr. Fusco and Ms. Marsh. You can take their advice and ignore our concerns for a third time, or you can listen to our concerns and ensure that the review is done right. This isn't about voting yes or no on the theater. This is about environmental review and making sure the occupants and neighbors, such as you and me, are protected. I also passed out to you a letter to each of you about problems that we have with the record that Mr. Fusco has provided to you. Quite frankly, it's a mess with documents, missing pages-
Mayor, you heard the rules earlier. You're not to attack people. You're to address the issue. And your constant remarks against Mr. Fusco are out of order. And I'm going to ask the mayor to hold you out of order if you continue in that fashion.
The record provided to you is missing pages, missing attachments, has incorrect attachments, and has other various problems that we describe in our letter. Again, please look carefully at this project before voting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else desiring to be heard this evening? Anyone else? We'll close that portion of our meeting. In the future, if anyone brings in paperwork, such as the letters we're sharing today, we do need a copy also. Besides the mayor and the council, we also need a copy for the clerk. So if one could be provided for the record, that would be greatly appreciated. It saves us a lot of copy and time and effort, so.
Mayor, along those lines, I want to make sure that all documents are recorded with the clerk before they're passed out to staff members. They need to be documented. They're a public document, and that procedure needs to be followed in the future.
I'm not following you, counsel. I'm sorry.
In regards to documents that are provided to the council, they need to be handed over to the clerk so she can make proper note of those documents, make sure they're entered into the public record before they're passed out to staff or anybody else.
And that's my request.
That's along the lines. I just want to make sure that procedure is followed in the future, and we don't, you know, we follow that procedure. I just want to make sure my point is taken.
There you go. City manager, if you'll make note of that, please.
Yes.
Acting city manager. Approval meeting minutes from August 22, 2013. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Camardo, seconded by Counselor Graney. Discussion?
Yes, the meeting minutes are incomplete. Nowhere in here does it talk to the objections that I read about the draft secret that was read by Mr. Lynch. And also, when I did the discussion of fire code safety, when I asked and requested some documentation regarding the, to substantiate the fire chiefs' orders or ruling that it was compliant, that the corporate, Assistant Corporate Counsel said that, "No, you can't have that because we'll be sued on it." I want that entered into the record. Everyone in this chamber that was present at the time heard that.
Counsel?
I just want to, it's one thing I know. Unfortunately, we ran out of tape. I guess the tape ran out at-
That's correct.
Nine o'clock. I don't know what time, but it ran out. Shouldn't there be more detailed, seeing that was our only official document? Shouldn't there be more detailed-
The tape is not the official document. The minutes of the clerk are the official document, and they don't have to be verbatim.
But isn't that a follow-up with council? Do we have some kind of record on what actually happened during council meetings?
The only thing I have to record are votes, really, the action taken, not the debate.
Well, I request that be placed in the minutes.
Just hang on one second. How do we, in the future, I just want to make sure that we have something, not only in this regard, but if something happened with the video or audio, that somebody could revert back to that for what was actually-
The minutes?
The minutes, yes.
The only way you would do that is if you had verbatim minutes. I'm not, I would not be comfortable trying to interpret what you say verbatim.
Well, that's why we have, that's why we have an audio or visual backup on that.
Right, but the record that I do is, I record the actions taken by council throughout the meeting, in the public-to-be-heard, that kind of thing. But I don't, I don't record what Peter says.
Well, I'm not saying Peter. I'm just saying anybody. If we didn't have an audio or a visual-
Even the public-to-be-heard, I summarize what some-
I know you do, but we still have an audio where somebody can look back and see.
Since it was, since tape was invented, yes. Prior to that, it's just the recordings of a clerk. There's the legal, strike me down if I'm wrong, but I've been told for the last 13 years, it's the, I record the actions, the votes, actions that council take, which are the votes.
Well, that's up to council if we want to change that procedure or not, I would assume.
Sure. If you want verbatim minutes, then you'd have to hire a stenographer.
Well, if we don't have a video, I think we need a verbatim, an audio.
You would ask if I bring a-
Right.
Audio, which, the video, what happened that time hasn't ever happened.
All right, as long as I've been here, it hasn't happened too. You're absolutely right. But I just want to make sure in the future that if something like that then ran out-
Right, it's never happened.
We would have something to back it up, or somebody would be taking hand notes and, you know.
If you wanted that, you'd have to hire a stenographer.
Well, we, Counselor, Counselor Graney, I know you wanted to speak, but go ahead. Go ahead, please.
I just want a clarification from corporate council on that.
Sure.
Yeah, exactly what I said previously, that the tape is a public service, basically. It has no official blessing by law. It's not required by law. The law just requires that there be minutes that do not have to be verbatim. And that's, those are the minutes that she records, and there probably will be statements or matters that would be left off. And again, I've checked this out on many occasions. That's the only way that this can be facilitated. If you want something verbatim, the audio and the tape would not be official. You'd have to hire a stenographer to be the official person transcribing the minutes and then verifying them.
You're absolutely right, but it also sweets it up to the body, whoever's taking the minutes, to follow through on what kind of minutes they-
I think that's your call.
And that's our call as council, what kind of minutes we want to have taken in the future. I don't have a problem with the way we're going, but I just have a problem in case the audio runs out. How do we, how do we fix that problem? And I, we talked about it last time. We're going to have a video or backup on that. But in the meantime, how do we take care of the problem that existed this past two weeks?
Well, the audio, I would have a backup audio, which I've never had because we've never had that problem. I think it was a once-in-a-lifetime problem, right, Steve? It's never happened before. I just, just, never happened again.
Hopefully.
Yeah. But we'll have an audio backup. But as far as the meeting Counselor Rozicka's referring to, I just record as much as I can for the resolutions, public-to-be-heard. I'd never would try to interpret in writing the conversations.
Well, maybe we should add better direction that evening on how to take care of the problem that existed.
However, my statement stands. Everyone that was present in this council chamber heard that statement. If it comes down to this, and let's say this gets back in the court, and everybody that was present gets subpoenaed, and under oath, they better say the truth.
I would hope they would swear that the truth went through their subpoena regardless of what the-
Understood, but I'm just telling you that that statement was said, verbatim. No, you can't have that. We'll get sued.
May I be heard on this, Mr. Mayor?
We were discussing-
Mr. Fusco, please.
Here, I was, what I, my recollection was, number one, I didn't say sued, in reference to what Mr. Rozicka is talking about. My recollection is that Mr. Rozicka was requesting that we get some type of opinion letter from Chief Diggart, something that would be created in addition to that which he had. And my advice at that particular time was, I don't think we should create additional papers for liability reasons. So that's my recollection of what happened on August 22. There was a subsequent request by Peter for any field notes or drawings or photographs which the chief may have taken in relation to his staging of the vehicles on State Street. And those were handed over, you were all provided copies of those with your packets for last week's meeting. But, just so that it were clear, what I, when I said what I said, my understanding, Pete, is what you were asking for was some type of opinion letter to be generated by the chief or to be drafted by the chief. And that I don't think is necessary. His signing of the acceptance of the exception, together with Mr. Hicks and Mr. Tanner, constitutes his opinion. And I hope that clarifies it.
Well, I've got, I've saved all the email traffic that I had with Doug regarding that, and he sustained your position, saying that I couldn't have the documentation that I asked for. And I said, "Well, you have it right here in your dissertation from Mr. Lynch that these documents are. It's a public document." I had to fight tooth and nail to get those documents. You or Doug did not want to release them to me, and I had to be very blunt and forward with it.
No, that's, number one, Pete, I didn't know that they even existed until the chief, until the chief shared them with us. So, no, there was no intention of withholding anything from you or any other member of council.
I'll share the emails with the press and let them make that determination.
Gentlemen, we have a motion on the floor and a second. No further, any further discussion? Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please. This in regards to approval of meeting minutes.
I, no, I asked for an amendment.
You have to have a second for that.
Is there a second? There ain't no second. We'll move to the original minutes. Counselor-
Mayor, and I apologize for my abrupt exiting last week. But can I, can I ask this one question?
Please. If it's in regards to the meeting minutes, I would assume yes.
Oh, not to the minutes. I'm sorry. I'm going to the project. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Counselor Graney?
Yes.
Got lost here.
Counselor Camardo?
I think somebody should have taken some kind of minutes in regard to this here, seeing there was a problem with the audio, so I'm going to vote no.
Counselor Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Rozicka?
No.
Mayor Quill?
Aye. Our first presentation, the STAR program presentation by Jeff Low and Bev Howard from New York State Department of Taxation and-
Good evening. I'm Jeff Low from New York State Tax and Finance, Real Property Division. What I wanted to come out here today was to, a little more public information about the STAR re-registration program. Most people have heard about it. We were out at the state fair reregistering people for the STAR program, and I just wanted to go over it in, you know, different city council meetings, county legislator meetings, school board meetings. We want to make sure that everybody gets reregistered that is deserving of it. The reason we started this program was, New York State Comptroller did an audit of the STAR program, and they found up, I guess it was kind of like an estimate, up to 13 million in fraud, whether it was intentional or unintentional, in the STAR program. So it was decided that we should go through and try to reregister everyone. Okay? So, the main question's going to be, which part of the STAR gets reregistered? And it's going to be the basic STAR. So taxpayers who are 65 and older that receive the enhanced STAR need to reregister on a yearly basis anyway, so it really has no effect on them. It's more for your basic, which is younger than 65 with less than a $500,000 income. And it just requires all homeowners receiving the basic STAR to reregister with the tax department, not with their local assessor or with the county. It applies to 2.6 million taxpayers. And, you know, if you have any questions, we'd like you to call Department of Taxation and Finance, not your local assessor.
Question for you. Do they have to re-sign up for STAR once you're into the program? That's what a lot of people have asked. Once you're, you know, I guess, into the program, is it an automatic renewal or is it something you have to renew?
For this year, everybody has to renew, and then after this year, they haven't decided if it's going to be a biannual thing or every other year, basically.
So everybody has to-
Everybody has to reregister at this time.
Just so we make that clear that people are not confused about that.
Yes, that receive the basic STAR. Correct. If you received the basic STAR last year, you need to reregister on this year. And a lot of it came down to, some assessors had, which, I mean, it's comical, but it's not, had people getting a STAR exemption on vacant parcels, on commercial property. So being that STAR is, I guess, reimbursed by state funds, to have the local assessors monitoring it seemed like maybe not such a good idea, put it easily. So that's where this whole process came through. And I know it's going to be filled with errors, but, you know, it seemed like to save the state millions of dollars on a yearly basis, we're giving it a shot. Purpose is a successful implementation will ensure that everybody gets the STAR program who are qualified to get the STAR exemption, and it'll eliminate fraud, whether it's unintentional or intentional. There's a lot of times that it's unintentional where people get married, rent out their, the husband's or the wife's house, and the STAR exemption stays on that property, when in actuality it should be removed.
Could you elaborate on what is a qualified homeowner?
Qualified homeowner?
Yes.
Okay, it's homeowner who's younger than 65, making less than $500,000, and lives in their primary residence. So any homeowner in the state that falls into that category is qualified to receive the STAR exemption, the basic STAR exemption. It's meant to hit every property owner in the state. So the process is going to be, Tax and Finance is going, we collected all the 2013 assessment rolls. We designated a unique STAR code for every basic STAR exemption that was on each roll for each taxpayer. And we started mailing out letters to all the homeowners with this STAR code and how to register. And to register, you receive your letter. It has a STAR code on it. You either can call our webs, or call our hotline, Tax and Finance hotline, or you can register online through our website. If you lose the letter and you lose your STAR code, you can go online and look it up. You put in your property address, and it'll give you your STAR code.
Mike Collins, this registration period goes?
Goes through, well, we're hoping to catch everybody by December 31. So we've been out, I mean, most people have heard about it. I know there's plenty of signs hanging up here in City Hall. The letters have gone out. We've been at the state fair. It's been on the news, in the newspaper. But I'm sure there's going to be people that get missed, and there'll probably be a grace period. But we're looking to catch everybody by December 31. If people, for those that haven't registered by December 1, they'll be receiving a second letter at the beginning of December.
And this is for next year's school tax, correct?
This is for next year's school taxes, correct.
Now, I received the letter, and it's, and it's very easy to do. In fact, you can even do it right over the phone.
Yes. I did it on, did it by the phone because no one else in our office, everybody else was doing it online. And we're actually going to be registering people outside here using the iPad for those that would like to register tonight.
Do you have any workshops set up at City Hall, we'll say, or any of the areas where somebody can come in and you could help them through the process, or is that our local assessor can have that happen?
The local assessor can have that happen, and we are exploring any avenue we can at this time. We're just trying to hit the most amount of people for what we can. As much time as we spent at the state fair, I believe we signed up approximately 5,000 people, which, when you look at the big picture, out of 2.6 million, isn't a lot, but we're putting the effort forth right now. The online registration, like we discussed, you go onto our Tax and Finance website, and you walk through the steps. There is the necessity, you need your STAR code, so if you don't have that letter, you can always look it up right on our website. The one catch that a lot of people do have an issue with is you do need your social security number, and it does need to be entered or given over the phone. I know there's a lot of people that aren't happy with that, but it's the only way Tax and Finance can track everybody and separate out who's getting more than one. Your state Tax and Finance will confirm that the income is less than $500,000 for husband and wife or property owners. And then Tax and Finance sends a list to the assessor, letting them, the assessor know what exemptions should or shouldn't be on the file. And this is one thing that we feel for the assessor, because people that might be denied certain exemptions, there's no recourse that the assessor can help with. All calls or issues need to be handled by Tax and Finance. And then here's somewhat of our registration schedule. We started mailing out letters for the central area, Syracuse area, back in August. We started mailing out letters for the central area, Syracuse area, back in August, before the state fair, and by October fourth, everybody in the state will have received their letter, or the letters for all regions will be sent out. And then, December first, like I said earlier, the second notice will go out for those who haven't registered yet, and the deadline is December thirty-first. That's what we're shooting for, but we anticipate possible issues. And, any appeals process, for those that have their STAR removed, will be directed through Tax and Finance, not through the usual grievance board for municipalities. And again, just to look up their code, your STAR code, you go to Department of Taxation and Finance website, and here's a way to go right in there and look up your code to sign up. Now, I don't know if there is, like, Counselor Marto brought up, other ways to get the word out, so to speak, but, you know, we're considering this a critical issue, and we're trying to hit as much as we can for our avenue and mass media, to let everybody know. Okay? The new STAR applications, because the letters are based on homeowners who own property in 2013, for those, I guess, new homeowners that purchased houses after July first, 2013, they will be given a STAR exemption, or they will have to fill out the, I guess, the old way, the STAR registration form, hand it in to their assessor, and Tax and Finance, as of July, will send them a letter, and they'll have to call and r-register for the STAR exemption. And, for more information, visit our website, or here's a number to call. And if, for those taxpayers who need more, they can contact the assessor, and the assessor will call our office. And again, for anybody who is interested, we'll have the iPad out, out in the hallway, registering whoever needs to be, or would like to be registered. Any questions?
Jeff, the city and county have been trying very hard in the last few years to work together. I'll ask the city manager, maybe they could work with the county in sponsoring an event or two, where people can come in and register. As you say, it looks very simplistic, but there are still a lot of people that are not comfortable working on the internet, or whatever, but the phone is available. But at the same time, we'll see what we can do to come up with some type of a seminar here, here in the county.
Yes, I know, we'll be at the Auburn School Board meeting, and we'll be at the county legislator meeting this month and next month, also. And I know there are, there are plenty of people, there are thousands, or tens of thousands of Amish in the state, that also don't have social security numbers. So, it is a, it is a big process. Okay?
Right.
Thank you.
Jeff, one quick question.
Oh.
You know how many people this affects in Auburn?
In Auburn?
Yeah.
No, I do not. I'm, I know there are seventy-two-hundred residential properties in the city, and obviously, many of them are multi-units, and maybe aren't owned, I guess, primary residents of the owner. So, I would assume it'd be at least five-thousand, fifty-five-hundred.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Ladies and gentlemen, to be in the hallway, if anybody wants to sign up for their STAR, or stay around here and watch for the STARs, so... Next, we have Katie Jacob, Owasco Lake Watershed.
I'm gonna do my best to try to address everybody here, so, I'm just facing the front here. All right, so I just wanna do a quick introduction of myself and the program before I get started. I know I'm kind of on a schedule, so if I start going over, just give me the sign here.
Take all the time you want, Katie.
Ah, thank you, Mike. Well, my name is Katie Jacob, and I...
Katie, use the mic.
Right here, okay, I'm sorry. All right, my name is Katie Jacob, I work for the Owasco Lake Watershed Inspection Program. I started working back in 2011, under my predecessor, Jess Reinhardt, when she left in the August of 2011, I kind of took over for her, and I've been here ever since. Prior to that, I graduated from Paul Smith College, with a natural resource management and policy degree. I grew up in the area, I'm from Monizuma, and the Finger Lakes have really been kind of an integral part of me wanting to go forward and get my natural resource degree, and here I am now. Working for the program, you've really gotta know your stats. It may seem simple, and they're just numbers, but this is Owasco Lake. It's a smaller lake, but still, it's our lake, it's Owosco. It's about ten-and-a-half miles long, we got twenty-five miles of shoreline to work with, ninety percent of it, ninety-five percent of it is developed, and most of that ninety percent are on, still on private septic systems as well. It's about two-hundred-and-sixty billion gallons, that's the volume, average width is about one-point-two miles, depth about ninety-six feet, one-hundred-and-seventy-seven in the deepest part, and the time it takes for one raindrop to get from the Owasco inlet to the Owasco outlet is about three to four years, which is actually really good, when you look at Kewa Lake and Seneca Lake, which can take about seven to ten years for all the water in that lake to replenish itself. And that just goes to show that our lake-to-watershed ratio is huge. We have the largest lake-to-watershed ratio out of, out of any of the Finger Lakes, that's what really makes Owasco Lake stand out. And that means for every one square mile of lake that we have, there are twenty square miles of watershed. So, that means that whatever we do on our watershed, whatever we do on that land, is, no matter what, it's going to affect how, you know, what our water quality is going to be. Which is, it's, it's pretty, I mean, it's, it's pretty important, and as you can see, about, roughly, about two-thirds of the watershed is south of Moravia, that's where a lot of your water's gonna be coming from. I'll show you in the next slide, that the Owasco inlet is actually responsible for over half of the water that's coming into our lake. So, that's where we really need to be focusing our efforts, that's where we need the involvement, but I'll get, I'll get to that. There are seventeen municipalities total, there's about a hundred-and-seventy square miles in Kewa County, there's about five square miles in Onondah County, and there's about thirty, thirty-three square miles in Tompkins County. So, it's, it's not just a Kewa County thing, we gotta, you know, work with Soan Water Districts, county governments from three different counties, so it's really, it's a group effort. The program's only about, maybe, seven years old, or maybe, six years old, but it's, I mean, it's, it's a working effort, and we're getting there. As you can see, these are our, these are our watersheds, each, I mean, we have our full two-hundred-and-eight square mile Owasco Lake watershed, but we also have several subwatersheds within that. As you can see, like I mentioned earlier, the Owasco inlet is responsible for fifty-five percent of the water coming into the lake, so odds are, the water that you're drinking probably comes from the Owasco inlet at some point. We did a lot of work this year on Dutch Hollow Brook, which is the second-largest tributary into Owasco Lake. And then, of course, we have Vaness and Sucker Brook on the northern ends, and then we have about forty intermittent feeder streams, you know, nine months out of the year, they're running dry, but when we get rain, like we did today, and especially this spring, they were, they were really rushing. We were focusing a lot of our efforts, actually, on a lot of the feeder streams, because, you know, they seem so docile, you know, like I said, nine months out of the year, but we get two inches of rain in, you know, two hours, and they become this raging torrent, and we actually had a lot of issues on the southern end of the watershed, where, well, a lot of what we do is, we just go and consult with landowners who have issues, and on the southern, on the southwestern part of the lake, there were three or four different incidences that were identical. They had these beautiful, peaceful little feeder streams that, you know, would run, you know, by folks' houses, and we would get all this rain, and, I mean, you wouldn't believe the amount of debris and rock. I mean, it could fill, you know, half of this room, that would come down in just, you know, a couple hours, just from all that rain that we got, so. With this kind of changing weather patterns that we've been experiencing lately, it's something that I wouldn't be surprised if that's what we're gonna be focusing our efforts on in the future. And, this map is just a depiction of the land use within the watershed. A little over half of the watershed is covered in ag, and about, what did that say? It's about two-ish percent is residential, but believe it or not, we're about fifty-fifty between residential and ag, as far as, you know, percentage of what we focus our efforts on. Just because, you know, when you have so many houses, you know, you, y'all have been out on Owasco Lake, I'm sure, and you see house after house after house on Owasco Lake, they're, they're right there, and that's where, you know, a lot of the priority does lie. So, I think Jess Reinhardt was last here presenting in 2010, and Vicky called me about a month ago and asked me if I could give a little update, so really, what have we been up to since 2010? And part of what we do is stormwater concerns. This is actually a project that was just finished last fall, and it started in 2009, but of course, lack of funds, and some folks' bank accounts, you know, can kind of, you know, prolong efforts. So, what we have here, I just wanna give a brief, you know, overview of what we have here. There's a gentleman who just, you know, they wanted to build a house, lakefront, beautiful spot, but they had to dig away at some of the bank, and when you dig away at the toe of a bank, that's especially right next to the lake, that bank is just going to give away, and that's what it did, it wound up becoming a really huge water quality concern. When Jess was in the position, she had him put in a retaining wall, which you can see in the second picture, on the bottom there, it failed. It happens, there was a huge rain event that happened, I think, two months after he installed it, and it failed. Finally, in 2012, he installed it with a little bit more careful measures, he put in some drainage behind it, and some, like, really nice pebbles to allow for more water to kind of penetrate through, so it doesn't just build up behind the wall and make it topple over. So, that's where it's at now, we're still looking to get him to put in some kind of erosion control on the bank itself, but it's looking really good now, and we haven't really had any issues with it since, so. That's what we like to see. If I can just, oh, okay. And these are more examples of some stormwater concerns. This is just something that happened just this year, we had a guy wanting to build a house, he was right next to a little intermittent unprotected tributary, I guess is what you can call it, according to the DEC, but every tributary in the Owasco Lake watershed, to the program, is something that we look to protect. He built a house, he cleared off about, oh, maybe, three-quarters of an acre of land, was kind of careless with where he was driving his bulldozer, wind up going into that little intermittent stream that was dry at the time, and we got a whole bunch of rain, this was in June, I believe, we got a whole bunch of rain, which was, it was the eighth, what is June on record, so, you know, of course. Went and checked out the site during a rainstorm, and sure enough, it's kind of hard to see, which you can see where there's some discoloration in the water, and that is coming from the site, and that, to the DEC, is a water quality violation. But, instead of getting DEC involved, I like to give the landowners kind of an ultimatum, you know, if you fix this within, you know, two days, you know, I'm gonna let it go. And so, that's what he did, he installed a silt fence, I went back two days later, and it was during the same kind of heavy rainstorm, and as you can see, the silt fence was very effective, the water was running clear, there was no discoloration, that's what we like to see. We also do a lot with agriculture, like I said, about half of what we do is ag. This, this is a couple years old, we're still kind of monitoring it on and off. This was about fifty acres, they originally cleared the land for a housing development that they wanted to put up, turns out, the soils were extremely wet, but while they, they cleared the land, you know, they bulldozed right up to, you know, the side of a stream bank, there was no vegetation, it looked like they drove their, they drove their equipment right through the stream, and you can see their traps, and you know, that, I mean, the DEC was called on it, a few other folks were called, we worked with Soan Water as well, and this is what it looks like after, these pictures are about a year old. I actually went out with a Soan Water Conservation District technician, and we put in a twenty-foot winter wheat buffer the November before this, and we went and checked on it the spring after, and it was looking great. They installed some proper crossings in several different areas, with some nice culverts to allow water to move through there, without getting all muddy and nasty, and the banks were, you know, becoming revegetated, and they'll continue to do that, and, I mean, that's, that's what you like to see, I mean, you don't want to, you know, end up with what I showed you before that. Another example of some issues with agriculture, sometimes, you know, mistakes happen, you know, a lot, most farms have plans, you know, if they wanna spread, they gotta make sure that it's not gonna rain within, you know, forty-eight hours, and if it is, they have to tow it in. Well, what happened here is that some spreading went on, and it wasn't supposed to rain, but it did, and when it rained, it rained a lot. And you'll see in the bottom left-hand corner, that's what winds up happening, a lot of phosphates, you know, get into your waterway. Spoke with the producer, spoke with the DEC, and what the DEC had him do was actually create a berm on either side of this grass drainage swale, which you can see kind of in the upper right-hand corner there. The grass drainage swale was supposed to prevent any of those contaminants to enter the water by filtering out anything that would flow through there, but because it rained so much, it was actually ineffective. So, what they had him do was just install this earthen berm there, and it, I went and checked it out, and it was actually, it was really neat to see it working, the water collected behind that earthen berm, and when that water collected there, it was able to allow everything else that was harmful to the water and the environment to settle out before continuing on. Oh, it's doing that. We also deal a lot with improper disposal of refuse, this is actually one of my favorite examples, again, it's a couple years old, but it's just a contrast of photos here, during one of our, each, each year, we do fire lane and feeder stream inspections all along the lake, and during one of the fire lane inspections, we actually found, it was just a homeowner association, they had this clearing in the woods next to a little stream, that they used to dump anything from yard clippings, to, I mean, anything that they wanted to get rid of, you know, campfire ashes, I think there was like an old inner tube in there, or something like that. And, you know, I mean, you know, it's, folks don't really think about it, you know, it's just sitting there, it's not in the water, but according to the Owasco Lake Rules and Regulations, which I operate off of, which are part of the New York State Public Health Law, that's, that's not allowed. I got ahold of the president of the Homeowner Association, they had it cleared out within a few months, and now it looks like this beautiful clearing in the woods, you know, you know, they should make it into a park or something, you know, it looks just much more pleasing. This is another incident, we had, you can see in the upper left-hand corner, there was about seventeen old junk vehicles that were within the seventy-five-feet linear distance that the Owasco Lake Rules and Regulations allowed for, well, they would classify that as a junkyard. It took a little while, it took a little bartering back and forth, I guess is what you could say, with the landowner, but he was actually able to get all the, all of the vehicles out, there were actually some boats in there, was able to scrap it and make a whole bunch of money. I wish I had an updated aerial view of what that pasture looks like now, but there's a small stream that runs within about, oh, sixty feet of those cars up there, and he got everything cleared out within a few months, and it's, I mean, compliance and cooperation like that is, it's not rare, but it's just, it's really good to have, especially when you have, I mean, that many cars so close to, you know, waterway. We also do a lot of critical area seeding, I don't have an exact number on the amount of acres that we've done, we, we partner, I guess, what you could say, with the Kewa County Soan Water, they have a one-thousand-gallon, I think it might be actually, like eleven-hundred-gallon hydrocedar, and, I mean, it's, it's their, it's their money, it's their machine, but we, you know, work with landowners who have something like, on the top there, this is actually just this year, I wish I had a more updated photo, it's probably flo- It's probably flourishing now with, with all the rain that we've had, but there was a lumber company in the southern part of the watershed that had regraded a bank. They needed it seeded. It was about three quarters of an acre. They had it seeded within a week and when you have a bank that steep, you know, getting that seeded is really critical. And we also, I think this year alone, we worked with the Swollen Water Conservation District and seeded about seven-ish, maybe six and a half miles of ditches throughout the watershed as well. It may not seem like a big deal, you know, when you see the, you know, the bat goes out there clearing out and dredging the dishes. It may not seem like a big deal, it may not seem like it has an effect, but that, you know, those ditches are there to transport water and when those ditches are not seeded, they aren't vegetated, they're transporting not only water, but a lot of sediment. And part of my job is to keep that sediment in place so it doesn't wind up in the lake. So working with Swollen Water is, I mean, it's been very, very beneficial. Did we get some before and after? We also, each year, we'd like to hire on some seasonal inspectors. Since I've been in, we've hired about, well, we've hired three. We hired two in the spring of 2012, one in the fall of 2012 and I was fortunate enough to have another seasonal this summer who will also be coming back, working part-time starting in October. And they do a lot of fieldwork. If you want to be a seasonal, you've got to want to do fieldwork and that's the fun stuff. So, you know, they're usually not too hard to find. This year, for example, this summer Eli Vitale was the kid I had working for the program. He actually did a lot of the Dutch Hollow Brook watershed inspections and he probably covered close to 50 miles on foot just this summer, just trekking through the water, looking for erosion, improper disposal of refuse, depleted buffers, anything like that. And that method has actually become very, very effective. You know, you have someone out in the field looking for that stuff, he can come back to me with the GPS waypoints with the pictures. We can put it into the computer, contact the landowner and take it from there. So they're a huge help and I'm excited to have Eli back come October. He'll be working more with the rainy season stuff. We do a lot with education and outreach. That's one of my favorite things to do actually with the watershed, just because I think it's fun, for one thing. The main thing that we've really been working with, with education and outreach, still have a lot to go with it, is municipality participation. Like I said, two-thirds roughly of the watershed is located south of Moravia. That's where we need the participation. However, it's been kind of a challenge because the folks down there don't get their water from Owasco Lake, so they don't really feel as if they have any kind of purpose or importance and it takes, it's just going to take a lot of going down to the town hall meetings and saying, "This is why we need you." Which, you know, we were down at Moravia, I think, back in May and I hope we made a good impression. I don't know if we've heard back from them yet, but I'm willing to, you know, keep on paying them a visit. But we'll, we'll see. I mean, I do enjoy doing that kind of stuff. We also take a part in Owasco Lake Day this year. It was a huge hit. It was, it was great. Senator Nizolio was there. He's actually the guy who got this whole program started. It's really great to meet him. I'll be taking part in Conservation Field Days come next week and I'll be using, we, they have it at Emerson Park and it's where you go and you talk to local sixth-grade students about anything, you know, you really want to, that's environmental related. And this year, I'm using the slide on the playground to portray, you know, erosion and soil runoff, things like that. So it'll be kind of fun. I do a monthly eco-talk as much as I can, you know, some months it's more difficult than others. We actually use part of our Emerson Foundation grant money to buy some Storm Dream medallions. I bought 20 of them so far, just to try them out. I put a few out on Martin's Point. I think there might be a couple on Burditt's Point. There's a few out on Conig's Point. So if you see those little blue medallions with the fish on it, that's who they're from and they look great. If you go actually out to Green Links, I think there's a whole bunch out there. We also do, I'm still working on these welcome packets, so whoever has just moved into the watershed, you know, if you just moved into the watershed, you're going to get a welcome packet from the Owasco Lake Watershed Inspection Program, just kind of introducing the program to them. We do a lot of education and awareness mailings. We do signage, as you can see on the bottom left-hand corner there. And we also assist the Owasco Watershed Lake Association with their annual water quality monitoring program that just wrapped up this past Tuesday and they do, you know, an annual report each year about that. And one more note, just to end on, this is really, really cool. This is actually from John Halfman. We've hired him, well, the planning department has hired him back for about five or six years or, well, eight years, I guess now, and to do some water quality monitoring within the Owasco Lake watershed. And according to the 2012 study, you know, Owasco Lake is still, I mean, still doing pretty good in terms of water quality. We're getting better year by year. Hopefully, we can keep with that trend and I think the efforts that, you know, between the Owasco Lake Watershed Inspection Program, the Kew County Planning Department, the Health Department, Swollen Water, City of Auburn, Town of Owasco, everything that, you know, all you folks contribute to us really helps with these efforts and really helps us get those, you know, results that we're looking for. So if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to call. I left a card and an annual report up on the podium over there. I don't think I brought enough, but please call me if you're interested, so.
Tell us the condition of the lake. There's been a lot of questions on how the water quality is on the lake. Can you just touch upon that for the folks?
Well, I mean, there's a lot that goes into the monitoring. I can tell you right now, from the, from the Owasco Watershed Lake Association's sampling that we do every, every summer, they've been doing it for about 20, 25 years now. And it always seems to me that the water quality is remaining, well, the samples are coming back very consistent with the prior years. You know, it doesn't, you know, if you try to implement a best management practice, we're actually pretty lucky with Owasco Lake because like I said, our retention time is three to four years, so we tend to see results fairly quickly, but they're not an overnight thing. Right now, the quality of the lake is remaining pretty consistent, but I'm not saying that we don't have pretty far to go. I mean, there's always room for improvement, so.
Can you, Mayor?
Councillor, please.
In your opinion, what can the City of Auburn do? What more can we do to, to help you and assist you in monitoring the lake? I know you could probably go on forever.
Well, do you really want me? I mean, how much time do I got here?
How about the money? Tell them, Katie.
Y'all are, I mean, you're doing...
But Katie, we need to hear this, though.
Yeah, no, I mean, you're doing as much as you can right now. I mean, between Charlie Green, Bruce Natalie, even myself, Bill, just encouraging participation from other municipalities. I know you're the City of Auburn, but you are the folks, you are part of that 44,000 people. You are part of that, over half of the county that gets their water from Owasco Lake. I know, you know, we host the Owasco Lake Day up here at Emerson Park, which is, you know, great. Just participation from people. What I do really depends, you know, not only on my eye, but everybody else's eye. I mean, if, if there's anything that you, you know, notice in the watershed, you know, this, I mean, getting results is really what we're looking for and we can't do that without, you know, citizens and participation.
If Bruce wants a comment as well, please feel free, but what are we currently doing now that is having a very positive impact on the lake? And is something that we need to ramp up or need to continue to do?
I think it's just the education and awareness. You know, most folks don't realize what a watershed is or if they're even located within the watershed. I think if we can keep working on that, then we can definitely, you know, continue...
Matt, just for an example, just grass clippings, where you put your grass clippings is very important because a lot of it ends up in the lake.
So a lot of the pollutants is pretty much from nature? Is that, is there some truth to that?
Definitely. You know, one of the main contributing factors to the lake's water quality is, you know, the amount of phosphorus that enters the lake. And phosphorus, you know, it comes from, you know, your septic system. It comes from manure, it comes from your pet waste, it comes from your yard clippings, but a lot, I mean, we're very, the soils here are very, very rich in phosphorus as it is. So they, I mean, there is some contribution there as well. So, I mean, but most people aren't aware of that, though, either. So education and awareness is huge. It may not seem like it, but it, it is.
Katie, just, can you comment? How much of the impact on the lake quality is from the stormwater runoff in the city?
In the city? Actually, Auburn doesn't have much because everything from the city actually goes into the Owasco outlet, so. Owasco, that's beyond Owasco Lake.
Now, the Asian clam, that's been a threat to our lake. So one, can you educate us on, A, how much of a threat that is and B, how can we deter that if we can?
Right. Well, it's kind of hard to say. You know, I mean, we first discovered it back in maybe 2008 or 2009 and they did a study again for the third year in a row to kind of gauge the population density of the Asian clam. They are, you know, I guess a danger to our water quality because they do emit phosphorus. But lowering the lake level, like you were able to do, like, you know, the City of Auburn was able to do last year, to freeze out those clams, I think was very effective. They were finding just mostly young clams this year, which is a good sign that, because that means that, you know, it was all this year's young, nothing from last year had survived. So continuing to do that would be a huge contribution.
Yeah, Bruce, you want to comment on it?
Bruce Natalie from County Planning, but also Auburn resident. Yeah, with the clams, I think, one of the things is we're keeping them in check, but the longer we can lower the lake in the winter, the better because of the more we can freeze. Last year, we actually were pretty effective and so one of the things that's really important is we're, we've been trying for three or four years to meet with Corps of Engineers to have them be more flexible, so. And actually, it was something we discussed with Senator Gillibrand when she was here and the meeting has been set up. So Anthony DeCarlo will be coming with us, I hope. But basically, we're looking for more flexibility so we can kill more of them. They, they really did contribute to huge blue-green algae blooms in 2010, 2011. But the next two years, we actually were able to kill more and we didn't have those blooms. Luckily, those blooms happened in September after the bathing season, so they didn't have as much of an impact.
Bruce, can you just explain the lake level, what we were trying to do with that process?
Yeah. The lake level is controlled by the state dam. The Corps of Engineers has what they call a rule curve and it's basically the guidance of what the city water department has to follow. So in the summer, it's at 713 is the target maximum. In the winter, 710, three feet lower, is the target minimum. And it's lowered just to catch that spring snowmelt and fill back up. But if we can actually get it down to 710 and keep it there for most of the winter, it'll kill more clams. And last year, we got down to 710.2 on a real cold snap, really helped quite a bit. It is amazing because if you, I have samples in my office from the diving this summer. All the, once you're out in three feet of water and deeper, there's, there are adult clams, but everything in the shallow water is just tiny stuff because all the adults were effectively killed. If we have a good winter and the Corps gives us a little more flexibility, we'll be able to kill, even getting it down another six inches might kill another 10 acres of the adults. And mostly adults are in shallow, in the real pure sand off of Deauville and off of the Pavilion Beach. So just getting it down a little bit more. Anthony's been very, working very hard at it, but the senator has helped set up a meeting and we hope to accomplish something with that.
Now, Bruce, do we, or Katie, do we have to, enforcement of regulations and so forth on the lake? I know we're pretty low with manpower. I mean, I know you can do so much and is that something that we are desperately in need?
Well, Katie didn't say it, but what I would like is two or three Kates.
Now, explain why, though.
Well, I think, I think the more...
If we had two more Kates...
I think the more walking we're doing, the more interacting we're doing with, with property owners, the more storm events, we're actually having, have staff out watching some of the farm runoff, we could be more effective catching problems and working with the landowners to fix them. So right now, with Katie and like two or three summer inspectors, we're sort of like 1.5 full-time equivalents. If we could gradually grow that to two to three full-time equivalent staff members, I think we would have more impact and...
And there's been considerable development around the lake. How does that concern you?
The thing that concerns me really about around the lake and what the summer inspectors are helping with is the more lawns, the more yard waste, the more pets, all that actually helps pollute the near shore, the shallow areas. The shallow areas are where we're getting the clams, we're getting zebra mussels. We'll probably have quagga mussels soon, which is a bigger cousin of the zebra. And when that happens, you're setting up more chances for algae blooms. The algae blooms, when the algae dies, that stuff gets into our drinking water plant and that's when we have to use more carbon, activate a carbon to try and get that taste and that odor. You normally see in October and March, so it'll be coming soon. So the more we can do educating nearshore folks about how to manage yard waste, how to manage pet waste, just how to buffer their little piece of the lake and do their very best part to protect the lake. This is one of those things where everybody doing their little piece helps the overall quality. And the way we can communicate that is having more people on the ground, talking to people.
Are we checking septic systems?
Yes, yes. Actually, Kewa County has one of the best septic systems, reinspection programs in the state. Ours is actually working so well. Eileen O'Connor has been invited to the statewide association of public, public health engineers for the state to actually explain how we do it because there's several other counties that are going to adopt our system. Folks who live on the lake, who have septic systems, have to have their systems tested every other year. Other parts of the state, you only get your system tested when the property sells. So if that property's been in the same family for two generations, it's probably never been tested. But in Kewa County, if you're lakefront, it's tested every other year.
Bruce or Katie, whoever wants to field it. You mentioned the algae. I know we have had some incidents with some of the blue-green algies. Can you comment on how that's being managed?
You know, I think the algae is, the more we can do to cut down on phosphorus getting in the lake, the more we can educate lakeshore homeowners, the more that'll improve. The more Asian clams we can kill in the winter, that will all help us. It's really, it's a matter sometime of just weather conditions, but I think overall, one of the best things, all the pressure we put to have the Groton sewage treatment plant upgraded several years ago, that has actually reduced a lot of soluble phosphorus that's coming in the lake. The actual intensity of algae blooms in general has gone down, except for right over the clam beds. Right, that's, that's actually, we discovered, we discovered the Asian clams because we're investigating the blue-green algae bloom and they were in the same spot. So it's everything we can do to actually knock that population down every winter by lowering the lake as much as we can, that's, that's a big key, I think, for the next couple of years.
Now, this is the million-dollar question. How do we handle calls when we lower the lake level and the people who live on the lake when they're camped?
You know, one of the things that Frank DiOrio first and then Anthony after that, it's amazing. He, I get the phone calls too and you can actually get phone calls within the same week, people complaining that it's too high and people complaining it's too low. People last year, when we had a dry August, were calling them saying, "Why are you letting water out?" It's like, it hasn't rained in 45 days. But we, you know, it's just trying to explain to folks and this year, we're running about, what, six, seven inches too deep right now over Kewa Lake, because eight inches. I mean, it's just been a rainy summer. That, that's one of the toughest things I think Anthony has to deal with and Vicky. There's a couple of people out in the watershed that have all of our numbers and they just call us and Katie, but it's, it's just, you got to explain the weather to them, you got to explain, you know, we're letting out what we're allowed to let out or, that's a, that's a tricky one.
I know. Bruce, who sets the level? Is it Corps of Engineers?
It is, it is following that rule curve the Corps of Engineers set up. And Anthony's done a fairly decent job of staying right on track with it, despite all the big storms we've had.
We are the keeper of the lake.
But I would, you know, Katie's done a good job, Jess did a nice job before her. I think, I think we're having a positive impact. You know, if we had one and a half, two and a half Kates, I think we'd be doing better.
You know, people often think because we're not giving a lot of penalties, and that maybe our, some of our guidelines and our restrictions need to be updated. Any validity to that?
I think that, if I had any criticism from Katie, I think she, soon, she needs to take out that violation book and start writing them.
Oh, no, I'm not looking for criticism, Katie, I'm just saying, do it-
I'm just, no, I'm just saying, no. I think our rules are tough enough. I think if we actually, you really start cranking down and saying, "Okay, you got to fix this, or else you'll be brought in front of the Board of Health." And I think we do have a couple. We have one or two cases getting close to that point. It's a public health violation, so if Katie writes up a violation, then it'll go to the County Board of Health, or, actually, it'll go to the County Board of Health that it's in. So, if it's in the Onadaga piece, it'll go to Onadaga's Board of Health. But we have a couple of cases actually working their way there.
And Katie, I didn't put you on the spot, but do you see some regulations that you'd like to see updated?
Actually, yes. I would, mostly with stormwater, and maybe a little bit to do with agriculture, just to get things, you know, because the rules and regulations were written back in 1984, sometime in the 1980s. And so, they should be, you know, looked at, but right now, we're making it work, and it is effective.
And I'd like to underscore how much this ties hand-in-hand with the work we're doing at the state dam, how important that really is. And not only is it controlling the lake level, but it's also our first defense against flooding.
And just to touch on the blue-green algae, too, I just wanted to add quickly. The blue-green algae blooms, I mean, if they're going to occur, they're going to occur in, you know, about September, about this time of year. And we do have a protocol for that. If you are a lakefront resident, or you're on Owasco Lake, and you see something that resembles blue-green algae, what we have you do is take a sample. You can have a mason jar, a water bottle, anything like that. You can bring it to my office or the Health Department, and we can possibly send it to the state lab to get it confirmed as blue-green algae. And that is also on the website, on the Health Department's website.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Counsel. Thank you, Katie. Bruce, thank you. Counsel, on the agenda I have in front of me, and I don't know if you have it or not, there's another presentation in regards to brownfields. But I'm told by the acting city manager that has been pulled for a later date, so. We'll move along to public announcements. City manager's report?
Just one item, Mayor. City staff and our community partner agencies have been working to assist Cugee Community College in their efforts to find temporary housing for students that were displaced in the Latimore Hall fire. So, we'll continue our efforts till we learn that the students are housed.
If I can comment on that. I spoke with, it's helping some students find some apartments, and I believe there was some water damage. They couldn't get the sprinklers off, I guess. The, in regards to Latimore Hall, just to refresh my memory, the college is in control of that, or is that, that is under-
It's privately owned.
It is privately owned.
Could I interrupt one second? Dr. Larson's here. Doctor, would you like to give us an update on, because I've been receiving emails from you, and you've been on top of that situation?
Thank you, John. There was a stove top fire on Monday afternoon. It was put out quickly because the sprinkler system worked as it was designed to. It took place on the fifth floor, and so, the water, of course, came down, and there's pretty extensive water damage for that side of the building. So, there were about 48 students who were displaced Monday. They stayed at the Holiday Inn for three nights. College staff has worked very closely with them. We have several students who are going to be housed for the fall semester at Wells College. We have worked with a number of people across the city and the county to ensure that every student will have a place to stay for the fall semester.
And to add to that, there was several landlords who came forward and offered apartments to these students at a reduced rate, and also provide furniture for them. So, it's, again, a tribute to the kind-heartedness of many of our Auburnians. But no, they were pleased. There were some parents that I did speak to, and of course, some athletic coaches were concerned, too, with some of their players. But they were pleased, too, with the promptness and putting them in the Holiday Inn.
Yes. So, we believe that every student will have his or her concerns addressed in a way that will be effective for them.
Dan, thank you for your, and the staff at the college, of course, quick response to this problem that existed. I know the students need to continue with their studies, and any interruption interrupts their lifestyle. So, thank you for your, and I would like you to thank your staff also at the college for all they did.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Just one thing, under city manager, if I could, please. Doug is going to bring us some reorganization, and I'd like to remind him about, we're going to do something the first of September, and start talking about reorganization and also on the budget. I'd like to have that brought back, and why we're on that subject. John, could you give us an update on, I see there's $28,000 or almost $30,000 that was submitted under the claims list for Bonn, Schenectady, King? Was that with the fire department? Litigation?
$7,000 of that bill was labor negotiations with the fire department.
Okay.
And I have a copy of the bill, if you'd like.
Yeah, I'd like to get, I'd like to see what exactly was spent in that area. And also, if Doug could bring us, give us an update on the overtime with the fire department since September 1st, I guess, was when the layoffs went into effect. Thank you.
We'll get that.
John, you're all set on the manager's report?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Presentation, petition, communications. Seeker, resolution number 104 of 2013 regarding the Schwartz Family Performing Arts Center. Because this was tabled, we'll need a sponsor in a second to bring it back on the floor. Counselor Graney, seconded by Counselor Smith. Mr. Rossi, do we need to reread the entire document back into the record?
No, it's been read, and it's been open for inspection, and the tabling does not affect that part of it, and we don't have to read it all over again.
Very good. Thank you.
In regards to the record that's attached here, I looked through this, what we were given last, and distributed in our package, and I found myself in agreements with the law firm here, mislabeling. There's, in fact, there's no labeling. I know, Counselor Graney, you have it. Find me, find me-
Counselor-
Find me disc P.
Which, which, which document are you-
I'm talking about the secret document in the record attached. Find me the P. Find me exhibit P. You got 20 seconds.
Give me a hint, Pete.
I'm just trying to make, okay, Counselor Smith.
Page 15?
No. It's in the back, way in the back, and these are all out of order. Okay, Counselor Smith, I want you to find me exhibit V.
Exhibit B?
V. V is in victory. You notice he's got to pod through this. There's no labels. And there's myriad of documents. These are not in order. This record is atrocious. I recommend that until this record is completed and put in order and made reasonably correct, in fact, it's missing pages, the affidavit of the own is missing. If you look at the Part II, it's missing every other page in the document. This record is terrible. So, how can we vote on a resolution with a record like this? You don't vote on a resolution and fix the record. The record has to be in place before the vote happens. So, I recommend this be tabled for another week until this record gets corrected.
Counselor, is that a motion?
Yes. To fix, to correct the record. If we don't correct the record and we vote on this record, it's borderline fraud.
Counselor, if I may, it's a motion to table and-
Yes. To correct the record. Give them a week.
I'm sorry. Counselor, can you just explain a little bit more what you mean by that?
The record is attached here. If you look at it, in the resolution, it's referring to lettered and lettered sections of the record. This record is part of this resolution. This record is incomplete, totally messed, missing pages, mislabeled. For the fact, you couldn't find any of those exhibits. We don't vote on a record and then correct it afterwards. That's not correct. That's not procedurally correct. The record needs to be fixed.
So, you're asking for it to be more-
I'm asking for it to be put off for another week until this record gets fixed. Put in order, labeled, and, in fact, there's some documents that are added to different records as I pod through this thing. I spent several hours this weekend, and I didn't change the order of it. I made new copies of it and put it in order at my house, in order to understand what he was trying to say here, and found that there was several pages missing. If you look in the Part II, every other page is missing. We go from page- Right here. We're skipping Page 1, Page 3. Page 2 of 2, then we go up here to 1. I mean, it's all over the map. The record needs to be repaired. It's right here in this secret document, or right here in the resolution. It refers to all these documents in the record. In fact, they start on Page 3 and 4. The record is insufficient.
My copy of the record is in order. I do know the Anna-
Oh, I made a motion that we-
Is there a second?
Well, Mr. Graney asked me to come up.
But there's, there's a motion on the floor.
There wasn't a second yet.
I don't know. Did you ask, did you ask?
Yes, I asked, I asked that the record be-
It said it was a motion and clarification, so I'd rather get some clarification.
I want clarification.
I want clarification before I ask for, does anyone want a second at this time, or would you rather hear clarification?
I'd like to hear the clarification, please.
I don't know if I have a clarification. I know, I know that Mr. Selby's secretary, Anna, made the copies last week, last Friday, so that you'd have them in your packets for this week. I know she had some trouble with that, because she told me so. I personally didn't stand at the copy machine and make the copies. I know that the copy that I have, which is intended for publication tomorrow in Albany, is in order. There's no tabs yet, for the simple reason that additional, I expected that additional documents would be submitted tonight, and in fact, they were. So, they'll be, everything will be tabbed once we have the, once we have the final, once we have the final, all of the final documents. But by adjourning for another week, all you're going to get is another set of documents next week. And so, well, let's wait another week, and then you get another set of documents the week after. I mean, this is now the third time we've been here, and as we can see, documents are submitted every single time that, during the public-to-be-heard portion, when, so it's almost virtually impossible for me to know what is going to be submitted when it isn't submitted ahead of time. The members of the Camardo Law Firm who were here tonight don't share with me what they're going to do ahead of time. They hand it up in the public-to-be-heard. Last week, we did make some additions, but this week, the secretaries didn't work overtime. They had to work till 10 o'clock last week, trying to, 10 o'clock at night, realizing that Mr. Camardo's partners would be, or associates, would be submitting documents at the last minute. So, the copy that I have is complete. If Mr. Selby's secretary made a mistake, accept my apology for that.
Andy, that's the record we have to look at in order to make a judgment. Also, I noticed that there's no Phase 1 documentation in this record.
You got, you got the Part 1 tabbed.
You have the Phase 1 in it. There is no Phase 1 documents in that.
Well, that was not, that might not have been part of the previous seeker. I'm not certain of that. That I'm not certain. I, I don't know verbatim what's in Part 1. I do know Parts 2 and 3.
I, in here, there should be the Phase 1 documents, which triggered everything and started here. That was the whole idea, that, in fact, it's referred, Phase 1 is referred to in many letters from Ms. Marsh and other people making communications, and we don't even have it. I never even seen it. So, therefore, like I say, I maintain the record is incomplete. We can't vote on it tonight until it gets at least put in order, put in front of us. And if there's any additions, we get them that night, we see them, we know where they go. So, that being said, I'm asking for to move the motion. I made a motion that we table them until the record gets cleared.
Very good. Is there a second? Hearing no second. Feeding. Mr. Fusco, you want to take over where we left off last week?
Yes, as you-
Excuse me one second. Counselor Smith, did you want to weigh in at this point, or did you want to hold off? You want, you want to talk about-
Yes, are we talking about?
The seeker.
The seeker.
Yes, we are.
I did go through this, and it's, table of contents would have been nice, but that's beside the point. Going through this, I'm reading. As always, my main concern has been the fire issue. And I did read a couple of the documents on the fire issue here. And we had Mr. Tanner, the county code enforcement, he came in, presented. Mr. Hacks, our senior code enforcement officer from the city hall, from Auburn City Hall, and of course, Mr. Diger, Chief Diger, excuse me, from the Auburn Fire Department. And I just want confirmation. Now, I'm not a fire chief, I'm not a code enforcement officer. These are not my areas of expertise. And quite often, you try to research as much as you possibly can when it comes to issues like this, and with the God-given abilities that I have, that we have, you use them to the best of your ability. And with many issues, I talk to experts that are in this area, that work in this field, that are outside of the, outside of the scope of operations, if you will. They really have no ties to Auburn, to the project, to either side of the issues. And I do that with many, many issues. To the, going back to the point about the fire apparatus, and as I said, it's always been a concern. And forgive me for reading to you, I think everyone that's come the last three weeks, we've been read to quite a bit in here. But I won't take long. "The theater includes protection and safety features such as the automatic sprinkler system, audible smoke and fire alarms, panic devices for egress doors, fire-rated construction at exterior walls, smoke vents over the stage. As we discussed, a fire apparatus road cannot be installed because of the location of the building and the property. The topography, the non-negotiable grades, and other similar conditions, such as the configuration of State Street, which is not under the control of the college or county. Because a fire apparatus road cannot be installed for this building, we investigated alternative means of fire protection as permitted by the code." I want to come back to that point. Now, attached for your consideration and approval are sketches showing how the front stair could be extended to the roof and can be equipped with a standpipe. Now, I won't go on anymore. And then, other documents, kind of reads, that we have in here, talk about the same thing. The building is equipped with automatic sprinkler, block-and-seal construction- The building is equipped with automatic sprinkler, block and steel construction, fire-rated interior finishes. On April 15th, 11:30 a.m., the Auburn Fire Department practiced setting up engine number five on State Street in front of the proposed theater site. All the parking spaces were full on both sides of the street, and it was set up without an issue. This is a 55-foot aerial truck. So, my concern, of course, is the, is the safety of any individuals that are within this building in case that there was a fire. And really, I know these sections of the city are grandfathered. If you look at Court Street, we could have a similar problem because I believe that street's pretty small, and it's a similar type situation. So, to have confirmation, all right, Chief Diger, Mr. Tanner, and Mr. Hicks, all three of you believe that the changes that have been made, the adaptions that we have made to these buildings, individuals who are at the theater, and God forbid if there was an accident, we are, they are safe as much as possibly a person can be safe. They can be rescued in the event of a fire.
Simple answer is yes. Mr. Tanner, and Mr. Hicks, and myself have worked for, especially Mr. Tanner and myself have worked for about two years on this project and seen it develop through different phases. We've gone through the effort to make sure that we can set up our aerial devices, not only the fire engines with aerial devices on them, but our actual ladder trucks, which have a wider jack spread. And at one point, we provided you folks with some photos of that. I've got other copies of that. It's tight, but as you have mentioned, Court Street's a similar circumstance, School Street's a similar circumstance. We're dealing with an existing infrastructure of streets and buildings that, without having some allowances and allowing those things, we'd have an awful lot of vacant spots in the city if we couldn't utilize different methods, new technologies. The code allows for that. The code is flexible to some extent to allow for changes in technology, changes in building design, things like that.
And we have four to five hydrants within, was it 100 feet?
I've easily got three within a block of that, other than a half a block of that. There's one right across the street, and one at each end of State Street. Water supply's not an issue, never has been.
Okay, can you explain for me one more time the standpipe?
Okay, what a standpipe is essentially is a solid piece of pipe with valves on it that goes from the street level all the way, in this instance, all the way to the roof. So that rather than a firefighter, and you know, if you envision a 20-story building, rather than trying to drag a hose line filled with water up 20 flights of stairs-
Okay.
-that you can just go to a connection on the affected floor, actually, the floor below is where we hook up, but we can actually hook up to that standpipe at that point and utilize a shorter length of hose. What we have is basically 150-foot, inch-and-a-half diameter hoses, actually, inch-and-three-quarter diameter hoses, that allow those firefighters to make an attack on the fire without having to go through the trouble of dragging the hose up the outside of the building or going entirely up the staircase.
Again, forgive me for my ignorance in this, is there a chance that that standpipe, in the event of a fire or something happened in the building, could be prohibited from working?
There's very little mechanical involved, especially with a building that short. If I was to get into a building in excess of 10 stories tall, those systems would have auxiliary fire pumps in them, they'd have pressure relief devices. In a building of that height, because there's not a significant amount of head pressure or water weight on the system, we don't need anything like that. It's a very simple system.
Chief, I got a question. Now, the building was redesigned to accommodate the standpipe, and there's a stairwell-
Correct.
-dedicated just for emergency.
If I remember correctly, it's been roughly, it's been two years now, and the building's gone through some changes in its footprint and all of those things. Originally, if I recall, there was not a protected staircase in the building, wouldn't be required typically in a building like that, of that very modest two-story height. I mean, it's really not that big of a deal by all accounts. But what they added into the design of the building as an extra added fire safety feature is an enclosed fire-rated stairwell. So that fire service can utilize that stairwell, not be encumbered by occupants egressing the building in a fire situation, hook up to their standpipe, and make access to not only the first floor, the second floor, but as well the roof, which is, again, not, it's very uncommon for a building that's only two stories tall to have a design feature like that. That would be more typical with a high-rise building, outside or beyond the reach of an aerial device.
So you feel they want beyond in their design?
Yes.
For safety features?
Now, if we wanted to down the road here, and this is something that we have obviously the option to do, if we wanted to make it where you could only park on one side of the street, that would be, I mean, you're comfortable the way it is now with the parking situation is, but if we just made it on one side of the street, that would be that much easier for you guys?
Without looking back at my notes, I believe structurally, curb-to-curb, that street is 31 and a half feet wide roughly, so it's well within the 26-foot dimension. There's about 10 feet taken off each side for the parking spots, based on its original design or the way it's striped right at the moment. So, yes, it is within the code enforcement's authority and the fire chief's authority to actually limit parking on a street if we want to, if we feel it's a fire safety issue. So we could do that.
Now, we've been discussing this for a long time, for a couple of years, and Mr. Razika is with just about every issue, he's very thorough in how he looks at everything, and I respect that. What I don't want is a hole in the ground on State Street. And the things, I guess we have to look at what, and I know there's disagreement on this, counsel, on this, but what we have to look at is what do we have to do as a city, and what are we responsible for? Now, as far as the college finances go, I don't know the college finances. That's between, the finances of the city, that's enough for me to be concerned with. And that's my scope of responsibility, and that's where I have to focus in my attention. That's for the board of trustees, that's for the college president, the college faculty, the union, and so forth. They have to deal with those issues. My concern years ago was, I wanted to go with the law in form originally, I wanted to go at a slower place, pace, excuse me, so we wouldn't have to be at this, at this stage. As I said back then, as I say now, we want a successful project here. We want a successful project because we want Auburn to be successful, and it is something new, and it's something unique to the city of Auburn. But before I go any further, I do take exception with something that was said last week on city investment. I believe in all due respect to Mr. Souls, who has invested in this community, and I'm all for individuals who invest in this community, goodness gracious, we want, there's nothing wrong with making-
I'm second to the chief to sit down, counsel.
There's nothing wrong with people making a profit. Profit's a bad word these days, unfortunately. People don't make profits, people don't have jobs, they don't stay in business. And I have no problems with that. But to say that the city has invested very little into this project, or very little into downtown, is really a, it's a tale, it's a why, it's not the truth. And just to give you a little background, $1.3 million the city's invested for streetscape improvements, all right, and that's including the complete renovation of Exchange Street Mall. And this is money that we applied for, money that we looked for to get for our downtown. Close to $1 million for rehab of the Market Street Park, $50,000 for reconstruction of Seminary, $400,000 for demolition of the Callet Building, plus on top of that, you're looking at another over $200,000 that we gave away for tipping fees, all right? So you're looking at, you know, $700,000, almost $800,000 there, which, that was no grant money, that came from the city. $700,000 for reconstruction of the first block of State Street. And again, that goes back to before I was on council in 2004. And then you look at the role of pilots, the role that pilots have played in the taxable value change from 2012 to 2013. There's an exemption increase of $5,000,017,000 in pilots. So again, that's $5 million in appraised value that's taking off the tax rolls for pilots. So my point in bringing this up is that the city, the taxpayers, the city council, our planning staff, we have taken a very serious look at our downtown to make downtown much more impressive than what it's been the past 20 years, that's for sure. And I think we're seeing the fruits of our labor. I believe that the theater will add to that. And I do not want to impede this, impede the progress of this project. My main concern was the safety, the fire safety, and number two, and we need to make this clear, city tax dollars are not being spent tonight. We're approving a seeker, all right? Auburn tax dollars are not going into the further construction of this project. Mr. Fusco, you can attest to that, correct, that we are not paying Jenny, and Mr. Selby would be saying the same thing. This is going on to the county, the college, this is on, excuse me, this will be put on their lap, but city tax dollars will not be, will not go towards the construction of this project.
Andy, can you inform the public why this came back to us?
Yes, before I do that, as long as the chief is still here, in his remarks, he did refer to some photographs, and I asked him to bring copies for all members of council and for the clerk as well. Mr. Graney has asked me, why has this matter come back to us? And the answer, the short answer for the members of the public is that two courts ordered it. Originally, we were the lead agency because we had the duty of tearing down the Callet Building and then conveying the land, which we owned because the former owners didn't pay tax, conveying the land to the, to the county of Keewa. In the litigation that was taken to the Fourth Department Appeals Court, there were about 17 or 18 issues raised, and we were successful in all of those except one. The court construed that what we did in February of 2011 was set a condition that the vapors that were detected in the various testing that was done just before and just after, or just during demolition, that we were requiring the builder, the colleges, the college, to vent those vapors through a device that is now called for in this particular, in this particular document that you have before you, the seeker part three, the environmental assessment form part three. By the time that matter was heard by the appellate division court in Rochester, the two items which we were required to do, namely demolish the existing Callet Building and sell the land to the county, had been completed. And there's a tenet in law that says that an agency, you're an agency, that no longer has an involvement, no longer has a role in the, in a project, cannot be lead agency. And there happens to be a case right on point from our own Fourth Department Court, the court, it's called Mulligan versus Cooperstown Field of Dreams. So as the members of this council know, because I briefed you on this in executive session about a year ago, I was in a legal quandary as to a darn it if you do, darn it if you don't situation. And because we no longer had an involvement in the, in the project, I felt that we were on potentially shaky ground by going forward as the lead agency. For that reason, the college performed their own seeker review last fall. And when the college completed its review and came up with an unconditional negative declaration, that matter was challenged in court as well. And the court, the Second Court, which was Supreme Court, Judge Polito, at that particular time, ordered us to specifically do this, said that the, our opponents in this case would in effect be equitably stopped from asserting the fact that we no longer had an involvement. So we were ordered, literally ordered, to do this by two courts. So that maybe we don't want to do it, but we have to do it. Maybe, and I respect Mr. Razika's thoroughness as well, maybe Mr. Razika would want to see a positive declaration. Or maybe perhaps he'd want to see an unconditional negative declaration. I don't know. But the course of order is that we don't have that choice. Typically, when you do a seeker review, you have three choices, an unconditional negative declaration, a positive declaration, or conditioned negative declaration. That's usually the three choices that are before you. In this particular case, we don't have those three choices. The courts have said there will not be a positive declaration, there will not be an environmental impact statement. Judge Polito specifically said that. And the appellate division specifically said there will be a conditioned negative declaration. It was remanded back to us to issue a conditioned negative declaration. So while the research by Pete is impressive, to say the least, while the arguments of Mr. Huffin and Mr. Cox are cogent legal arguments, we are not in a position to do anything other than the courts have ordered us to do, which is to issue a conditioned negative declaration, hence the proposed resolution which you have before you that Mr. Razika has made the motion on, and Mr. Graney has made the second.
Okay, I'd like to address some public safety issues along the same line. I have some documents here that I'm going to pass out. This is for you, there's one for the mayor and for the record. And since, yeah, since Mr. Camardo is just an observer, I've got him in the copy as well. And I'm going to go over these.
Thanks, Peter.
Now, I'm going to put it in a drive so that everybody can see the same documents out These are documents selected from the full FEAF, Environmental Assessment Form, otherwise known as FEAF. This here is page of the document here, it's found in tab 23. It may be a little difficult to read, but underneath it says, "10-inch holes punched in the concrete slab to facilitate percolation of water may have allowed venting of volatile compounds from below the slab, which would cause results of the SVI, Soil Vapor Intrusion Testing," or sample- Testing or Sampling, to be biased low." So in this thing here, you look at it, there's a potentially screwed up test here. Okay, if we go down below where I have it also highlighted, it says, "Several chlorinated VOCs, including 1-1 tetrachlorothene, 1-2 dicloethylene, carbon tetrachloride, tetrachlorothene, trichlorothylene, dicloethylene, are commonly used or with, associated with degreasing or dry cleaning operations, or are byproducts of degradation of parent materials, and their presence in subslab samples may be attributed to proximal spills, recent or historic." And now you go underneath here, and then you got the Department of Health 2006 guidance. And it talks about these VOCs. Okay, and it talks about the decision matrix, and we're going to get to that later. The decision matrix, and it says, where I've got a highlight, "For carbon tetrachloride, the matrix indicates that monitoring should be implemented as an interim measure to determine whether further action is necessary." And then also, if I go down here, it says, "New York State Department of Health, October 26, 2006 Guidance, based on these conditions and the fact that many VOCs beyond the four compounds used in the decision-making matrices were detected in the subslab soil vapor samples, more conservative actions may be applicable for those than drive through the strict interpretation of the guidance." And it says, "The most common mitigation methods are sealing preferential pathways, or," and it goes into talking about installing a vapor barrier. Now this, we're talking about a full site here. So now I go to the next document, tab 22, where it talks, "In possible historic leaching of cleaning solutions spilled during the time the building was used to store, clean, and repair furs, this adds to part, to Phase 1 Investigations." Then it goes, of course, if you look at under A, under Conclusions and Recommendations, "This is based on AEC's understanding that the concrete slab will be left in place, and a new structure will be constructed for use on the property." Let's look at some selected pages from the final guidance that appears we're taking this à la carte. It says, "A thorough understanding of the site, including its contamination, or including its history of use, characteristics, i.e. geology, geography, identified environmental contamination, etc." It's talking about the entire site. Then we go, it says, "When determining what actions, if any, are appropriate to mitigate current or prevent future human exposures, and all information known about the site is considered, i.e. a whole-picture approach is taken, because each site presents its own unique set of characteristics." Again, we go here to under 2.1, "The likely substance, subsurface source, i.e. on basis of known previous land uses of volatile chemicals." Okay, it's talking about what's in the ground here. Then it talks, "Groundwater is contaminated in a building sustained to leakage." I know they claim this is, "Building is sealed, but over time, these seals break. Foundations crack, walls crack. Everyone knows new constructions suspect to cracks." It says, "If locations of likely source areas are reasonably known, sampling during the investigation of the site rather than later is recommended because of the iterative nature of the sampling process." It says, "In the latter scenario, groundwater and soil and other site information may be used as guide of an investigation of soil vapor intrusion pathways, such selecting zones and locations for subsurface vapor samples based on likely mitigation pathways and source areas." And this is in section 2.6.1 and 2.6.2. At a minimum depth, groundwater and soil should be identified prior to use. And then it also goes down here, "If exposures due to soil vapor intrusion appear likely, delay of sampling is contemplated, i.e. the state, i.e. New York State Department of Health and DEC should be informed of the contemplated delay and irrational rationale for the delay." I don't think we've ever done anything here. Now we look at the decision matrix. Now the decision matrix, remember, we had a screwed up test here. We had levels that are indeterminate because of the holes punched into slabs and water used to flush the area. It says, and underneath this thing, it says, "Take reasonable practical actions to identify sources and reduce exposures." Says, "Therefore, steps should be taken, identify potential sources, and reduce exposures accordingly, by keeping," and it talks about containers, "Resampling may be recommended to demonstrate the effectiveness of actions taken to reduce exposures." And then it talks about monitor and mitigate. It says, "Monitoring mitigation may be recommended after considering the magnitude of subs soil vapor and indoor air concentrations." Well, we had indoor air concentrations that were skewed because all the windows were knocked out of the building. We had in, subs soil, or subslab vapor concentrations that were skewed because we had holes punched in the floor. On the bottom here, "If exposure requires a concern due to outdoor sources, then the DEC will decide who is responsible for further investigation and any necessary remediation. Depending on the outdoor source, this responsible may or may not fall upon the party conducting the soil vapor intrusion." Then I go on here, "Community outreach. No one even heard of any of this soil vapor intrusion testing or anything until this SECA hit." It says, "A heightened awareness by environmental professionals and general public, both nationally and statewide, for the importance of soil vapor intrusion." It says, "While people may have been exposed to contamination, providing them with accurate and timely information about these exposures is extremely important. This information should include details about the types of chemicals, the levels of exposure, and possible health risks from those exposures. Understand these chemicals cause cancer. In addition, information should be included details about the planning process of the investigation and remediation efforts." It says, "Techniques commonly used to inform the public about soil vapor intrusion issues are described in this section. The types and types of techniques selected for the site will vary depending on the community's needs, site-specific conditions, and remedial program." And then it talks about contact list. Site contains, list contains contacts, addresses, telephone numbers. That was never done. Project staff contact sheet was never done. Then we go down here to your CES report. Certified Environmental Services, CES continues to be recognized as an approved laboratory under New York State Department of Health's Environmental Laboratory Approval Program. It says, "Given this in reference, it suggests that there are compounds present in the soil and installation of a vapor barrier in subslab depressurization system within new building does not completely address the four other concerns originally raised by CES's August 31, 2012 letter. CES believes that additional environmental work on-site should be completed prior to construction in an effort to determine if the potential adjacent adverse environment impact may require mitigation. It is worth noting that according to Appendix A of the E, or the FEAF, 1,600 cubic yards, 1,600 cubic yard of soil is, are slated to be removed as part of the basement excavation portions, of which may be within the groundwater table. Sampling and analysis of the site's groundwater and soil would deem, seem prudent in an attempt to determine whether the potential exists for any current environmental concerns to create adverse release to the air during construction, which impacts site workers, continuous big, contiguous big building occupants, general public, groundwater by dewatering activities during construction, continued mitigation of contaminants within the groundwater that may exist." And then we go down here, "The most common mitigation methods are sealing preferential pathways or installing a vapor barrier in conjunction with the installation of a subslab pressurization, depressurization system." Here too, CES would agree that this approach is typically the most common measure to address concerns related to subslab vapors. However, it's typically used in instances where there is existing buildings on-site with well-known soil and/or groundwater contaminations, which may be inaccessible for, or for sites which soil and groundwater remediation has occurred, and is generally used as a precautionary measure to protect occupants either, of either current or future buildings. However, important to note, in this case, it has yet to be determined whether or not the soil or groundwater contamination even exists. Soil and groundwater and analytical data would seemingly be necessary to ensure that these concentration activities are performed in a manner to offer protection to the human health for both workers and the public. Provide protection of the environment by determined proper material, transportation, disposal options, and avoid creating possible pathways for contamination, if any, to migrate into confined layers via pathways created during construction. Since it appears that the form of building itself included a basement slab that has already been removed from the site, accessing the subsurface soil and groundwater for sampling and analysis would be relatively simple." And then it also says, "It should be also noted that other contaminants such as heavy trace metals are in semi-volatile organic compounds, which should also be considered are typical in urban environments." It says, "In closing, AEC indicated in their February 17 report that detected VOCs in the vapor could possibly be historic leaching of cleaning fluids solutions spilled during the time the building was used to store, clean, and repair furs, which seemed indicative that the source for such vapors could be the site itself. In order to best determine the site's soil or groundwater source as a source of concern, sampling and analysis at this time would not only seem logical, but prudent." Okay, now we go back through here, and then we had a discussion between Wendy Marsh and a judge. And I only read abbreviated portion of it, since it's, it's not that long, but. The court, "And wasn't sampling taken of the soil?" Ms. Marsh, "No." The court, "That's what they're trying to get at. What's in the soil in terms of contaminants?" Ms. Marsh, "That's what the petitioners would like us to do." The court, "That's what everybody wants to get at, to make sure there's no problem with the soil." Now, I didn't read the entire passage. These are the only things that I feel are really drive the point. Now let's look at the other side of the coin here. If testing is done in the groundwater and soil, and it finds insignificant levels of the VOCs, then the project won't have to add the cost of this mitigation method, no construction of the subslab system, and it will save the project a bunch of money. Now I'm going to ask each one of the council members during the vote to tell me why or why not they do not feel that this groundwater and vapor, or groundwater and soiled sample needs to be taken. I feel it's a very important and very critical for this. What it is, is it's not saying no to SECA, it's adding a condition. It's not saying no to the project, it's adding a condition to a conditional negative declaration. Now let's talk fire safety. And here I got Chapter 5, Section 502, titled Definitions. I got Chapter 5, Section 503, titled Fire Apparatus Access Roads. Where required, 5.3, 503.1, 503.1.1 Building and Facilities, 503.2.2 Specifications, 503.2.1 Dimensions. Then I have Appendix D, Section D 105, titled Aerial Fire Apparatus Access Roads, and subsection D 105.1, where required, and D 105.2, width. Here we can read, if we, the fire code, it says, fire, under 502.1 in the definitions, "Fire Apparatus Access Road. A road that provides the apparatus access from a fire station to a facility, building or portion thereof. This is a general term inclusive of all terms such as fire lanes, public street, private street, parking lot, and roadway." Now we go to 503.1.1 Building and Facilities. Approved fire access roads shall be provided for every facility, building, or portions of building hereafter constructed or moved within the jurisdiction. The fire access road shall comply with the requirements of this section and shall extend within 150 feet of all portions of the fills, of the facility and all portions of the exterior walls of the first story of the building, as measured by an approved route around the exterior of the building. Exceptions. The distance is permitted to be 300 feet where the building is equipped with a thorough, or equipped throughout with an automatic, with approved automatic sprinkler system installed in accordance with 903.3.1.1, or 903.1.2, when approved by city code officials. Now I can understand that. A fire apparatus road cannot be installed because of location on property, or topography, waterways, non-negotiable grades, or other similar conditions, is equipped with an automatic sprinkler system in accordance with 903.3.1.1, and approved alternate means of fire protection is provided. However, if you go down to 503.2, which says, "Fire Apparatus Access Roads shall be installed and arranged in accordance with Sections 503.2.1 through 503.2.7 and Appendix D." It continues on, "Except for approved security gates in accordance with section of 503.6, and unobstructed vehicle clearance of not less than 13 feet 6 inches, fire apparatus roads shall be also meet with requirements of Sections D 103.1 and D 105 of Appendix D." Now, nowhere in this code does it talk about building height, except in Appendix D. The trigger here, in Appendix D, where there's no exemption. Fire Apparatus, Section D 105, Aerial Fire Apparatus Access Roads. Where required, Buildings or portion of buildings or facilities exceeding 30 feet in height above the lowest level of the fire department vehicle access shall be provided with approved fire apparatus roads capable of accommodating fire department aerial apparatus. Overhead utility power lines shall not be located within the aerial fire apparatus width roadway. In D 105.2, the width, the fire apparatus access road shall have a minimum unobstructed width of 26 feet, and the immediate vicinity of any building of, or portion of building more than 30 feet in height. The trigger here is now, it becomes not a fire apparatus access road, but an aerial apparatus access road. Now, the big excuse is the city doesn't have any control, or the developer doesn't have control of the street. Well, this is a map from the plans that were given to us a couple of weeks ago in a letter that shows the street is being touched. They're building a crane pad, the street's being fenced off, the pavement's being cut. Under subterranean utilities are being removed. These are all features that are be done under the street. These are, now I'm going to talk about their field test analysis. And this is three pages from the field test, a description of fire apparatus, sketch of fire apparatus envelope, sketch of entrance of State Street at intersection with Genesee, photos taken by Auburn Fire Department during field testing, and then there's a CAD recommending rendering of the fire apparatus turning radius as it goes in the street. There's a description of the fire truck. The curb-to-curb turning radius of the American Le France rear mount, 100-foot ladder tower, ladder unit, tower unit with a standard front suspension and other same components, wheels, tires, wheelbase, front bumper extension would be 39.48 feet, with a wall-to-wall, not including platform or overhang of 42.81. Actual measurements as follows. Middle of front axle to front of bucket, 12 feet. Ground to bottom of bucket, 93, or 93 inches, or 77 foot 9 inches, width of bucket, 9 feet. With the vehicle on outside dimensions, mirror-to-mirror, 9 feet 7 inches. Height of vehicle, 11 feet 10 inches. Wheelbase center of front axle to rear axle, 22 feet 6 inches. Wheelbase center of front axle to center of front rear axle, 19 feet 10 inches. Full length of vehicle, 41 feet. Here's a sketch of the outrigging, and then you can see that it takes 19 feet to outrig this. There's a sketch given of the street, you can see that with the parking lanes of 10 feet, you only got 11 feet 8 inches of clearance. The following photos were taken on 4/18, 2/13 by the Auburn Fire Department for the field test. This is that ladder truck coming down the street. You've got a guy guiding the thing down the street so it doesn't hit any cars. Here you got it starting to outrig. They guided it down and cherry picked the location so it could clear that car. Here you can see how close it is to that car. If they're coming in in a hurry, how are they going to do that? Here it is outrigged, it's intrusion right into the parking place of the car. Here it is a close-up of it intruding in the car. Notice it's a compact car. Here is it fully outrigged in the street. Here it is on the other end outrigged in the street, you could see it in the dimensions here where it's close to the other side of the cars and inside the parking area. Here it is, the compact car. If it was, if it was a full-size car or a long pickup truck, this couldn't happen. There it is, it's very near the bumper. Here's the same condition here with the truck showing a little closer how it's over the, inside the, well inside the parking on the, would be the east side. Here is another shot of it, on the other side where it's very near the parked cars. Here's a close-up. Here it is outrigged again. You can see again, there was a compact car in position. Again, it's well in the parking area. There it is, is a close-up. Now the door access, look, the doors are barely open, can be opened here. This has to be cherry picked in location in order to do this. There, you got maybe an inch or two of clearance there. Now here's a CAD rendering, using the Ackerman Steering Principle, which we use in our, our businesses to determine mobility of military vehicles when burdened with expeditionary radar equipment. You could see that the street has to, that truck has to swing, and this is the theoretical tightest turn this truck can make. The driver drives up to the sweet spot, turns the wheels to lock, and turns in and makes the approach. You can see here that he needs to have 36 feet from the entrance of that road. That puts it very near, or if not into the lane on the eastbound side. If that is congested with traffic, or backed up with traffic, this truck can't make that turn. Also, if you look at it too, now the yellow areas is where it's outrigged, and you can see it's well in the parked area, even if the truck was centered. This is not an acceptable condition, and it obviously can be corrected. The developer needs to make, the city taxpayers can't pay for this, it's up to the developer who has control of the street during construction, as I showed, to reconfigure the street and make it So, I'll continue. The trigger for this is the 388 Height Building. Nowhere in the previous section or the exclusions does it talk about height. Height does not enter into the equation until it becomes the trigger for an aerial apparatus road. This road does not conform with those specifications and needs to be repaired.
Mayor, I see Mr. Tanner's here. Can you comment on this, Mr. Tanner? I know you elaborated fully two weeks ago on this.
And before you talk, Mr. Tanner, how long you been doing code enforcement?
About two and a half, three years.
What level of training have you got?
All of the official certification.
Which is what?
As well as the zoning officer, ICC certification, and just about every other construction certification you could ask for.
So, you've only been doing this two years. How many fire inspections have you done?
I do 65 a year for the county, about 72 in Senate. Union Springs, I do about 15. Probably more than most code enforcement officers do in 10 or 15 years.
What about, and now, how many have you done in the city?
The city of Auburn, I do all of the municipal buildings twice a year.
Now, I'm talking, what about new construction?
Fire inspections?
Yes.
You don't actually do a fire inspection?
What about code compliance for fire access roads and aerial apparatus roads?
What was the question?
What about insurance of the, fulfilling the requirements of fire apparatus roads and aerial apparatus roads?
That's all done during code compliance.
What I'm saying is this doesn't, this needs to be identified as a potential safety issue now and be targeted for investigation by codes and planning.
Counselor Green, you have the floor, sir. You have questions, please.
Comment on Appendix D.
First of all, I'd like to comment on a few things.
Sure.
A fire apparatus road is what the code says. It starts when the fire truck leaves the fire department. Along the way, there are actually a lot of things code enforcement officers, as well as the fire chief, he has the same authority, can control, as well as posting bridges, fire lanes, parking lots. I don't think anybody's ever had any argument over whether or not State Street could be reconfigured, up until this came back to the city for lead agency status under the last appellate decision, I believe the appellate. The county didn't own the property, the county doesn't, the county owns the property, but they don't own the road, the road is owned by the city. And certainly, if the city council wants to look at avenues for changing it, that's not my, I only look at the building plans that are submitted and tell you whether the code complies, give the applicant their options. In this case, they chose to pull an exemption, add fire features to the building, and not go to you and look at reconfiguring State Street. State Street isn't that old, is it going to be torn up? Absolutely. There's, I don't think anybody has any doubt with that kind of construction, particularly now that the construction is all block and sealed. It's a little harder to maneuver.
And they will come into the exemption parts of it, correct?
Exactly.
Can you explain that?
Well, part of the exemption, first of all, when the exemption was pointed out, the architect developed a plan. On top of the sprinkler system, there's smoke vents, there's a stand pipe system like high-rise buildings. There also is an access alley on the side of the building now because the building went from 300 seats down to 400. So, they brought a plan, this is what we're going to do to the building as an approved alternative way you accept it. And unfortunately, the burden of accepting that, and I can read you all sorts of places in the code, is the code enforcement officer. As all the municipalities I work with, I always go to the fire chief with every new building, whether it's residential, commercial, doesn't make any difference. Senate has a lot of commercial structures that have been built in the last two years. All of them go to the fire department for their review because the law says you have to. And that is all part of public safety, which we're all, have the training, taken the test, do all the continuing education for. You can question whether or not I am qualified as an ex-guy道路. I equate that to the same way as a doctor. I would rather have a doctor that just passed college work on me than a doctor that's been there for 60 years and is kind of stuck in his ways. Because the code changes every year. Every year, there's modifications, every year, there's new things that come about. And it's not a warm-body class anymore. The people that were certified 10 years ago was a warm-body class, you went and slept in the back of the room, if you signed the sheet at the end of the day, you passed. The tests you take now are consecutive and concurrent. You take one, you pass it, you go to the next course. So, I take real offense when you questioning my authority.
No, I'm just trying to clarify what, for my own self, your history is not on there.
As far as the access road, they have a good plan, they have a plan that I've worked with, or city code enforcement, city fire chief with for two years. Is it my first choice? It doesn't matter, this is an applicant process, this is what the applicant decided they wanted to do. There are a lot of other avenues you can look at, and there are a lot of safety features you have to look at with every building that's out there today. Essentially, 911 created a whole new section of the code we can look at next year, the 9/11 catastrophes. Now, anything over 10 stories, we got a whole new code coming. But this is an applicant process, they chose it, the engineer developed a secondary plan for fire suppression. And when we get into the aerial apparatus roads, you left out Section 503.1, Where Required.
I said that section, Where Required.
No, I actually skipped 503.
Well, 503.1.
It says, "Where fire apparatus roads shall be provided and maintained in accordance with Section 503.1 through 503.1.3."
503.3.
We didn't get to 502 yet, did we? We haven't left the first section, which...
Yes, but what triggers Appendix D, it says specifications, rated 503.2 Specifications, "fire apparatus access roads shall be installed, shall be installed and arranged in accordance with Section 503.2.1 through 503.2.7."
Gentlemen, you're talking over each other, gentlemen, you're talking over each other and we're missing it.
You missed my point. It says 503.1.1 through 503.1.3. When you go to 503.1, you have a list of where it's required, within 150 feet of a building, 300 different sprinkles. You don't get all the way down to 503.2 that refers to that if you use one of the exemptions in 503.1.
Which brings me to this point here, we have availability to have the state, Department of State Code Enforcement Division Administration make a ruling on this. I think that, given this question that I have, and I'm sure it's going to be asked again and then again and again, that we get guidance from the state here. Take local politics out of it, local interpretation out, let's get it right from the state.
That is an option you have.
I think that should be a condition in this SECR.
Is that a motion, Counselor?
I would like to amend the SECR documentation to say that we get a clarification of the code and buy-off from the state here. I want them, the New York State Department of State Code Enforcement Division to make a decision here.
Mr. Rossi?
If they make a determination that it's okay, then it's okay, nobody can complain.
Are we considering the SECR now?
This is, I'm adding this as a consideration, this is not saying no to the SECR, this is another condition.
Fusco, the order that we're doing this whole process in.
Well, as you know, Mr. Rossi, Question 18 in Part 2 of the SECR does discuss health and safety, so to a certain extent, there is some relevance here, but as you also know, generally, code compliance is type 2 exempt material from SECR. So, we're kind of, we're kind of in a situation where it could be argued other, both ways. But I think the more, the more compelling argument or discussion that you ought to be considering is, we hire a fire chief. We hire a code enforcement officer. Let them do their job, let's not have resolutions to tell them how to do their job. The code, may I finish, sir? The code gives options. One of the options is the methodology which Mr. Tanner has just explained, where it can be done locally. The exemption can be done locally, as it was done in this case with Mr. Tanner, Mr. Hicks, Mr. DiGart, accepting, with the word A, accepting, allowing, the proffered alternative presented to them by the architects. Now, there is also a provision in there that says, once a year, you can go to the State Review Board in Syracuse, and I think the reason they chose not to do that is because the State Review Board's not regularly held. But again, they chose, they chose an option which the law lays out for them. Because that particular option may not suit one, two, or five of you, I think it's wrong for you to tell these guys how to do their job. We hire experts to be fire chiefs, and then we let them be fire chiefs. We hire experts to be code officers, and we let them be code officers. So, Mr. Rossi, I hate to go on, but that's my problem with the motion that's on the floor. Let's let our employees do their job.
Not only that, but I just want to get this back to an orderly process. You have a SECR resolution on the floor now. If there are going to be any changes or motions to change or do anything different than what is in this SECR resolution, it should be done in an orderly fashion. And I'm asking you, if this is on the floor, should we not then proceed to a vote on this matter and then continue on with the process?
And I would ask that the mayor do that. I don't want to, I don't want to stifle Mr. Rzika if he has other points to make, but making motions within a resolution which has already been moved and seconded does cause confusion. And may I add, may I add this just as an aside? I think in 2011, you were all trying to do the right thing, the three of you that are here and the two of you that are no longer members of this council. And it was matters like this where, oh, we ought to do this, sounds like a good idea, that I think got us in the mess that we were in the first place. When you were attempting perhaps to err on the side of caution, if you will, what the court construed what you did in 2011 is start adding a bunch of other conditions. You muddied up the soup, that's why we're here. So, by addition, I certainly respect Mr. Rzika's opinions that we ought to have a condition about soil sampling, but we've not been ordered to do that. And I respect his latest observation that we ought to have a motion or a condition that requires these people to go to the state. But we weren't ordered to do that. And two meetings ago, he talked about, let's bring in the DEC to see whether the soil should be handled in some different way than the engineer suggests. We weren't ordered to do that. So, not that any of the ideas that any of you raise are bad ideas, that's not my point. My point here is what I'm asking you to do is follow the court orders and do what we have been ordered to do, and it's really that simple.
Now, Andy, we are doing exactly what the court said, we are taking a hard look at all the changes. We, and to come up with a conditional negative declaration. I am not saying no to SECR, I am not saying no to the project, I'm just saying we need to add conditions on this SECR, on the conditional negative deck to include soil sampling and groundwater testing, because we don't know how, what we're mitigating there. And then the other point is, on this...
Gentlemen, Counsel, we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
I was going to say, when we have a motion...
Mayor, just one second, we have a motion on the floor, the motion needs to be acted upon, and all this...
I agree, I'm trying to get it to that point. Motion, no, there's been a motion to table it, or to request New York State Building Inspection to...
Plus, I would like to add the condition that we do groundwater and soil sampling and determine a mitigation plan based on those results.
Counsel, would you repeat it for the clerk?
What's the whole, entire?
I would like us to add the condition that we do groundwater and soil sampling tests to determine the level of mitigation needed, if it determines what we need to do, the level of contamination to soil, worker exposure, all that. The second amendment I would like to make is that we have a determination of fire safety and fire code done by either, by the state or a local state rep. We have local politics in this.
Sorry, Peter, just...
I would like the state to weigh in on the fire code issue, I would like their interpretation just as it stands, whether Appendix D, aerial apparatus road applies or not, plus the configuration of the street as it is now. This is new construction, this street is under control of the builder, they're carving it up, they can reconfigure it.
You getting it now?
I didn't get it, I don't know where you stop and where you start.
Condition, I want...
Without, without...
Elaborating, yes. I would like to add the conditions that we do, look at groundwater and soil samples to determine what level of mitigation we need to do.
I got that.
Secondly, a fire code determination by the state on the acceptability of the state, the road as it is with the exemptions and how Appendix D applies.
Thank you.
Do we have a second, Mr. Rossi?
No, that's fine, she got it all, I just wanted to make sure it was clear.
And that was by...
Like I said, this is not saying no to the project, it's not saying no to SECR, it's saying, it's putting in an additional condition other than a subsab soil vapor ventilation.
Motion by Counsel Rzika, do we have a second? We have no second, motion dies. Mr. Green, you still have the floor with Mr. Tanner, or do you have anything else to ask of him, or?
Your professional opinion, is it safe?
I think it's safer than it would have been if State Street was 50 feet wide and called an apparatus road. And one of the things Jeff DiGart did when we took all the fire trucks out there, wasn't to see if we could do it, it was to see if when we go home at night, we can sleep because we haven't jeopardized anybody's safety. By you lies an exemption that we're going to be forced and have accepted. In my opinion, yeah, safer than it would be if it was on Genesee Street. The only thing I wanted to add while I do have the floor is I know there's always talk, and there has been the last three meetings I've been here, of the county working with the city in different fashions of government. Hopefully, you know, everybody's watched this project from the council, from the college, the county, the city, as well as code enforcement and myself and fire. It is possible that at least small fractions of local governments can work together.
They always have, Mr. Tanner. Mr. Fusco, the way I understand it, at this point, here no further discussion, you would like to call for a vote on the entire SECR?
Correct, Your Honor, we have a motion, a second, I think it's appropriate time for a roll call on the resolution that's before the board.
Andy, just a quick clarification here. Now, Judge Polito's already ruled on the groundwater, correct?
Correct.
And he said the college has looked, took a hard look at that.
Correct.
Correct? Do you have that, could you read that?
Well, do you have it in front of you? Judge Polito's decision, he determined that there was adequate ingress and egress, he determined that hard look, hard looks had been taken on possible groundwater flow from the nearby dry cleaning business, or the former nearby dry cleaning business, and from the Calhoun Department Store site itself. Now, you're incorporating by reference in Part 1 of your EAF, not only the SECR review which you already conducted back in 2000, but the SECR review which the college conducted in...
conducted in, in September of 2002. And so, the, the issue of groundwater has already been ruled on favorably, you know, in our favor, if you will.
Further discussion? Before we call the vote, Mr. Rozicka, you requested all of us give our opinion, why we're voting or not voting. That is a personal position, sir. You're more than welcome, as you have in this, in the past, to say what your concerns are and why you vote or not vote for an item. And I get respectfully tell counsel the same thing. If they so desire, that's fine, but there's no mandate that we must tell you why we voted to-
I, I just respectfully request that they state the reason why they feel that that is not necessary.
And from, and from a legal standpoint, here's why that's fraught with risk. The document, the resolution speaks for itself.
Thank you.
You're either in favor or you're against it.
Clerk, call the roll, please.
Counselor Greeney?
Yes.
Counselor Camardo?
Because of my position at the college and my past stance, I'm going to abstain from voting, please.
Counselor Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Rozicka?
For the objections that I've raised, not only to the record, but also because I feel that there's significant levels of public safety involved here, I have to say no.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carried.
Your Honor, may I, at this particular time, ask now that the resolution has passed, the other resolution authorizes you to sign the face page of the, of the environmental assessment form. I ask that we execute that right now because in the first and second lawsuits, there was an allegation that because you signed the day after, that what you were signing was something different than this council had approved. So, if we could, if, if Mr. Lynch could bring it up and we sign it right in front of the television cameras, we're not going to have that argument this time around now, are we?
Take it right over. Ask to approach.
Yep.
Those are all the documents today.
Today's documents.
Yeah.
He knows.
Okay. Okay, Mayor.
It's not today down there, too, Steve. Today's the 12th of October. I made a print my name on.
Steve, the two of you will sign the preparer line, since you prepared it together.
Mayor, I'm going to make a motion. We take a five-minute recess if possible.
Motion not necessary, Counsel. We'll be in recess for 10 minutes.
Two of you sign together and date it tonight.
We re, we, we will run back, resume back to our agenda, ordinances?
No.
Resolutions?
No.
Local laws?
No.
Table legislation?
No.
Other business, we'll start out with Mr. Talbot, presentation on the city tree program.
Does everybody have a copy?
Yes.
This one?
Yep.
Came in a pack.
Give me one second here.
This, I know it came up at council a few sessions ago about a update on the program that, that's been ongoing and it's been completed, so we'll just go over briefly and hit the high points of it. A little bit of a history, the city's maintained an urban forestry program for decades. You can go back in the old council minutes and they refer to our tree inventory as, as early as the early 1900s, so we're real proud of that. Council should be proud of that also, that you're maintaining and, and our commitment to it. We rely heavily on resident requests in addition to staff observations, and we still require the request forms we've gone over before. Then we download at our website. You just go to the forms and document tab, and all of our tree city ordinances governed under Chapter 277 Trees, and it's pretty, pretty straightforward, pretty clear. Once again, we have an extensive history of a commitment to maintain our tree inventory. Efforts of staff and volunteers have proven effective over the years, and we want to continue to maintain that effort. Critical part of maintaining our inventory, a healthy inventory, is the removal of disease, stress, or older trees that pose a threat. And that's where this program came in. Due to a number of factors, we're going on those before, the backlog of trees to be removed was just way too extensive for our current staffing level. And as a result, claims against the city due to property damage from city trees, they were increasing. In addition, tree damage due to storms and inclement weather were also increasing. And fortunately, the last few wind events we've had, we've had minimal damage to any structures, roads, property, cars, and corporation accounts. I think you've probably seen a decrease in tree-related requests or concerns or claims. So, you know, the program has been effective. Council, back in 2010, initiated this project, Financial Resolution 163 of 2010. Program was the last three years, consisted of tree removal, stump grinding, and some tree replanting. The removal list was determined by us at Public Works and the forms, we went through our history of forms and field observations. And we tried to prioritize the trees that we were really looking at to take down. What we did is, like we do with a lot of our larger projects, we broke the city down into four quadrants. The actual action came, we performed, but what it worked out best is when we performed four days of removal per week. We averaged about two and a half trees per day, depending on the size and other obstruction. Sometimes we got more, sometimes just a little bit less. We're going to remove for three weeks, and then we'd stump for one week to stay current and avoid a, just a tremendous stumping backlog. Because sometimes, there's nothing worse than seeing just a stump sitting there. I think it sends, sends the wrong message. Program costs, we used the Quga County list on vendors, and it was $2,000 a day, that included a tree truck, a chipper truck. The crane truck is key, and also they provided a three-person crew. Now, a crane truck, which we don't have, you're able to not just rope and drop the sections of tree, but actually crane it to the ground, so it really minimizes any damage to curbing, sidewalks, property. And really, I'm, I'm aware of just one broken sidewalk during this entire project, and really, we were not really convinced it was due to our activities, that some of the brakes looked a little bit old, but we were able to make it right for the person. In addition, we provided a loader and one to two dump trucks to take the logs to the landfill compost area. The stumping portion, it's $125 an hour, that included a pickup truck, a stumper, and a one-man crew. We provided a loader and the dump truck to remove the chips that don't fit back into the holes. Now, the areas, Area 1 was done in the winter of 2010, 11. You can see the effort at the time, we went a little bit heavy on the removal, 236 trees. Area 2 was a little bit more realistic about how we, the numbers we anticipated, 77 trees. Now, Areas 3 and 4 we did together from the winter of 2003 to spring of this year, and 134 trees were removed. Now, the tally that had 447 trees removed, a result of the program, and in addition to that program, we also had our own forces out, removed an additional 87 trees, which wasn't covered under the initial $200,000 bonding for the project. But we did include it in the, when we go to stump and everything. Now, the financials of this project, we bonded for $200,000, and we really kept a close watch on every dollar we spent. We've spent $183,000 of this. If you take just the bonding amount, and I'll go into the math a little bit differently, because I look at things a little bit differently than just the contractor cost, because also we participated and also with staffing. So, this is just applied, this expense per tree is applied specifically to the bonding. So, and we spent $6,300 on the replanting, which was 73 trees, and really, as we, as I talk a little bit, we'll, we're going to get a lot more aggressive with our replanting and really get the neighborhoods involved, because there's a couple different ways to do it. So, out of the bonded amount, the least 16, a little over $16,000, and what, you know, the uses of that remaining balance for replanting or any other problem, trees that really jump out at us. Now, if you take, I estimated we used about, on, over the entire project, probably about $90,000 out of our general fund, not out of the fund balance, but out of our actual operating budget. And if you do the math on that, it breaks down to be about $611 per tree, which is, if anyone knows of, ever had employ a tree contractor, that's a good price. And that was the whole idea behind the, kind of the bulk, the bulk rate of removal. So, it really, we met our goals. And like I said, we watched every dollar, we, we documented every address we were at, so we, we know exactly where we are. Now, our efforts today, we want to maintain now our tree inventory, we're pretty much caught up. We want to do a little better job at surveying our trees. That doesn't mean with a transit and all that, that means just knowing what we have out there in quantities. Our problem trees, we're going to continue to be removed or trimmed, we're still, I like to see more trimming than removal at this point. We just submitted a grant application, and we're really optimistic about that. I think the timing is right with the state, and what that's going to allow us to do is develop a, a good tree inventory management plan with all street and park trees located, meaning with, with, you know, right to the latitude and longitude. So, we'll be able to really, really stay up on removals and plantings with definitive locations, so we could plot it all. Really, I think we could do a better job, and that's what we're going to concentrate on hopefully over the winter, is concentrate on community involvement and for the replanting of our neighborhood street and city park trees, because there's two different kinds of public trees, there's street trees and there's park trees. So, we'd like to hear a lot from the people, and we're working on some forms to get out. And we're really, right now, concentrating on a fall, early winter planting with bare root trees, because for the price of the trees and the amount of labor it takes, that's the best bang for our buck as far as the, the trees. So, we have a good, solid list of planting locations and their addresses, so we're really going to, we're optimistic about this, this fall. It's a good way to get everybody involved. Park trees, talk about replanting limits, because it's just, you just can't plant a tree everywhere. I think that's where we've made a mistake in past of some species probably planted areas where they're not supposed to be, they grow too big for, or too wide. So, park trees, it's easier to find adequate locations than street trees. Some of the street tree limitations, the, you know, there's overhead power lines, there's underground utilities, including gas, sewer, water, electric, et cetera. Because back in the day, when we go to stump, we have to UFPO each location because we are breaking the surface, and it's, we've run into a few instances where the tree has actually grown around the water box or a gas line or an electrical line. So, it can get a little bit dicey when, in that situation. So, that's what we're, that's what we're going to avoid in the future, and also not planting silver maples under power lines or any, a tree that's going to grow to be 80 feet, it just doesn't make sense to plant it in some location. So, we've broken it down in three different varieties, small, medium, and large, and, you know, people can have as much input as they want. Unfortunately, if they like a large tree and it's just not conducive to, inappropriate for that location, we're not going to allow it to be planted. But we'll, we'll always settle on something that they can, that they feel good about. So, we encourage everybody to consider planting. Like I said, sometimes per the code, with setbacks from street corners, some locations we just can't plant, but most of them are going to be okay, provided there's nothing overhead or underground. You could go on to the benefits of trees for a long time, but some of the more, more simple ones, you know, it really does add beauty, natural color, provides color, shapes and forms for everybody to enjoy. You know, some of the best artwork, painting, poetry, story writing always includes some form of trees. So, it, it's a motivation for a lot of people. Provides privacy and a sense of security, reduces air pollution, you could go on forever on the benefits of that. Conserves water, reduces soil erosion, saves energy, keeps our homes cooler in the summer and warmer in the winter, reduces noise pollution. I know the guys on the garbage trucks love, it's a, a nice canopy over them come August when they've been at it for about four hours. And let me tell you, you can really tell the difference in temperature when you come off a hot street with no trees, turn onto a tree that has a nice canopy, and it really makes a difference. Creates wildlife and plant diversity, increases property values, marks the seasons, which is important. Everyone looks forward to smell of burning leaves in the air, not that they do it in the city, but, you know, and then, then you have to rake, but that's okay. Shields people from ultraviolet rays, and it does slow traffic. Studies are out there that's, it really does make a difference, and people tend to drive
Questions, counsel? Mike, sorry, you have more?
Oh, yeah, there's a little more, but we can-
Oh, okay, no, go right ahead.
Go ahead, Mike.
Go ahead, please.
No, this, you know, I call this new life, this is what our new trees will look when we install them. What we want to do is, is give the homeowners a care man, not a care, but a care sheet of things they should also do. This is, I just threw this in there, this is what we currently do, we have one tree trimmer, we have one tree truck, and, you know, that, he and the truck are supported by other public works departments. And the budget, if you remember, during the budget process, reduced our budgets, our budget here, so we're really watching our dollars, mostly in the services line, which is the contractors out there that can perform the service that we can. There's our tree truck, you know, thanks to the council for approving this purchase last year, it's 2012, and it really makes a difference. We can get up higher and more safely. Tree removals, we've all seen this before. What we want, what we're going to continue to do is plot each removal, we're not up to that, we haven't done the whole thing yet, but once we get on, you know, GPS and hopefully through the inventory management plan, we'll, we'll be up, be able to keep better track of it. These are the street plantings, there's different ways to look at it, it's hard to see really much, much progress when you scatter some plantings around, but what we might do is identify specific areas, like a street. The one that comes out, we looked at today, and, you know, there's probably 20 to 25 conducive places for trees, is along Swift Street, that experienced a lot of removals, so now the next phase is to replant, and we're optimistic about that. This, again, is the cursory survey we did. We had a, a meeting today at a Cornell Cooperative Extension, is the Emerald Ash Board, we've all heard about it. It, it is in Quga County now, it's been documented in the trap, so it's, it's on its way, and there'll be some issues with us with that. So, you know, we're going to have to develop some plans, which we're working on now, so... But I know it's hard, a lot of people don't think of our tree inventory really as an, an asset, but, and I just, and this is, these are estimates, just street trees, not park trees. If you do the math on those four quadrants that we did, roughly there's 8,200 street trees. You put a, which I think is a low value of roughly $250 per tree, the math equates to over $2 million in assets just in our trees. So, I think we really need to start looking at that. A lot of people call, and I think counselors, mayor, everybody receives a lot of tree calls, and they're usually not good. I want the tree gone, for whatever reasons, and, you know, it's our job, what we try to do is to not talk them down, but explain to them why we're just not going to take it down, because they don't want to rake, or they want to see the street a little better from their picture window. So, I hope everyone can understand, if they don't get the answer that they like, that we have to think of the city as a, as the entire city and what's best for everybody. So, we try to do our best. I know a lot of people are unhappy. Most people are happy, so... And if anyone, if anyone noticed, in front of the construction, there's a Plaza of the Arts, they removed four of our trees. Now, in their approved site plan, they're going to replace that when the construction's over and they're, they finished their sidewalks. So, don't be alarmed, they did remove four trees, they will be replaced at their expense.
While we're talking about downtown, on State Street, there was a couple of streets, trees taken out. Did they die, or did-
The bottom, there's also one more, that, yeah, they, and unfortunately, you know, trees are living things. When we, when we go to plant, we don't have the money to do really any soil testing. So, there's chemistry involved, we try to pick the most suitable sites, some areas get more salt in the winter than others, so the species that we've currently find success with, those are the ones we're going to stay with. And also, if you notice, along Loop Road, also, some trees just didn't make it.
So, are they going to get replanted on State Street then?
Yeah, but we're going to wait for a little bit, for, it seems like there might be some activity in that area. There's one that's dead right now, we're going to pull- There's one that's dead right now, we're going to pull out. Also, while I'm on it, the, if everyone has a chance, when you walk on Genesee Street, what we did is installed at no cost to the city, flexi paved around the base of three trees. And hopefully with this grant, if we're successful, which like I said, we really got our fingers crossed, what we'd like to do is put these around all of our trees within downtown. There's three different colors, everyone has their favorites, we'd like everybody to weigh in, whether you're a business owner walking by. The advantages of this, water, water infiltrates right through, it reduces soil erosion, stormwater runoff, and as you know, the steel grates, when our tree grows, they're a tripping hazard. Now, when our trees grow, what we have to do is take a razor knife and trim a little bit around, so a lot of advantages to it.
I want more weeping willow trees.
Oh, yeah. They're rough.
You like to see them drop, right?
Yeah.
Well, just to comment on the tree grates, we went to a great deal of expense to get those grates, it was only four or five years ago.
Yeah.
You know?
And, you know, some of the trees have outgrown the grate size.
They were about $1,800 a tree, I believe.
Yeah.
How different is the city situation as far as the trees go?
It's been positive.
Yeah, absolutely.
One thing I do have to comment, a couple people I know, I've sent them your way regarding a tree issue they had and they were very satisfied. In fact, they told me that you did, your guys did a great job and they said, you know, they told them when the stumps were going to be taken out and they took them out when they promised.
That's good to hear. And that's, you know, we encourage everybody to call, whether they have a question or an observation.
Mike, I don't know if you took care of this, a family hit me a call, they were, well, it's not funny, but they were at Clifford Park and they were just laying down, eating the sub and a good-sized branch fell within 10 feet. And they said, there's a couple of trees in Clifford Park that we might want to look at.
Okay.
That are dead, so just taking advantage of the discussion. Now, are we still planning right now?
No, we're planning, we're going to do it late October, early November planting.
Okay, in the fall.
So, and if anyone listening out there, we have a list right now of people who've contacted us interested. If you're not on that list or you think we may have forgotten you, please call us or email me or call us down at the office, we'll make sure you're on and then we'll come out. What we're going to do is come out, look at the locations. Because really, bare root is the way to go in the fall, simply because you can do more of them. In the springtime, we'd like to do another one with a different type called, you know, bald and burlap, which are a little bit bigger, so...
Mike, you said that you get many, or you get many phone calls, we get many phone calls. The ones I always enjoyed is they want their neighbor's tree cut down. And I thank you and Jerry before you to go out and investigate it. So, normally, there's nothing wrong with the tree, they just don't like it, so...
Well, it can get dicey at times. And like I said, trees, whether you know it or not, affect everybody. You know, you might not like trees, you might not even notice the trees, but I'll guarantee if you remove a tree, then you notice it. Hey, what was there? You know? Any other tree questions?
Yeah, Mike, how many, how many have you planted so far and how many do you plan on planting?
Well, we planted 73 and we hope to, I'd like to see our goal of possibly planting up to 100 per year for the next 10 years. Of course, once you get, you know, the, the ideal planting locations quickly get filled up, so you have to get a little bit more creative. And, you know, like I said, we can always find some spots in some of our parks, but I think it's important, I think it's a good way to, once again, you know, beat the same drum, but connect the generations. Nothing more enjoyable than spending a Saturday afternoon sunny with, you know, different age groups planting trees. It's a good way for neighbors to mingle, it's a good way for everybody to participate. And you know, once you start a little section and it gets cleaned up, it's contagious and everybody wants their neighborhoods to look nice, so...
Mike, part of that grant was money to purchase trees to plant, right?
Yes. Yep. And what we were going to do with the grant is concentrate on downtown for species down there.
Mike, can we switch gears, Counselor? You got something done trees still?
Yeah, a couple more.
Yeah, please.
Jenny, on the CDBG program, when we do the sidewalks, are we still looking at taking, removing some of these trees that might be an obstacle?
Yes, we have done that and we specifically, I think DPW had done some tree removals and we reimbursed their budget with CDBG funds to do that.
And in that instance, Counselor, when there's a tree that just has to be removed because there's a sidewalk going in, because the process is if there's an existing sidewalk, where the sidewalk's going to replacing it or installing a new one, they're going to have to grind some stumps or some roots. And we all know what happens then, it's not healthy for the tree, it's not healthy for anybody sometimes to the extent that they get ground down. So, what we'll do is encourage that person who had to have a tree removed, they have a sidewalk, put in to replant somewhere in close proximity.
And there's still a lot of bad trees out there.
Yeah.
At some point, we should look at doing a similar program.
Yeah, and this, you know, once again, I can't commend counsel enough for initiating this because it was much needed and it's really, you know, it's, the intent wasn't to shock and awe, pancake in our neighborhoods, but it was to really thin, or update our inventory, I guess is the way to put it, with what we replant appropriate for the locations.
There was...
Yeah. Yeah.
Mike, can we get switched gears a minute? We spoke earlier today and I'm sure counsel is getting the same question about the water level at Hoops Park. Give us just a brief description as to why and what...
Right. Well, how fitting that we had a watershed presentation when really what we should probably do is really delineate our Hoops Park pond watershed because that has its own watershed. And what everyone's doing upstream really affects the health of the pond. So, what we've done is lowered the pond elevation so we can really take a good look at what the, what's at the bottom. We, everyone knows we had a, there's a lot of algae on top at times and there's a lot of seaweed growth. So, what was happening is the seaweed was getting into the pumps for the fountains and it was sucking it right in and burns out the pumps. So, we dropped the elevation, I know a couple of the counselors been out there, a couple have been in the pond, shoveling and moving stuff around and Doug's been involved and what we're trying to do is create some movement of some of the silt and some of the solids that enter from the south there and kind of push them towards the outlet. But it's still, the, the goal here is for the overall health of the pond. There's a lot of different things that go into the health of a pond, everything from chemistry to your, your fish quantities and types. And one positive though, we were able to get, there's two big snapping turtles out there and that's the cause of the one-legged ducks. So, we were able to, we were able to get the, one of the snapping turtles and he's in it, we're going to relocate them. And there's another bigger one out there that I don't think will fit in the trash can that's out there, but that's one of the positives. The other positive, we're able to actually look at the pond bottom and what's been built up. Because unfortunately, there's been some, some development upgrading and of course, during the heavy rains, like Katie said, everything ends up in your watershed, into your, your body, wherever that is, and ours is Hoops Park, right, the pond. So, I appreciate everybody's patience who lives in close proximity because unlike the inconvenience of bridge work or one-lane traffic, you can cuss out the crew and go on your way. Here, if you're walking the pond, it's always there. You see just, it looks like no progress, but there is progress being made. Soil and water's come and looked at it, there's experts in the field, we hope to get down there because like I said, everything from the chemistry of the groundwater, the chemistry of the pond water, the muck at the bottom, you know, the aquatic life in there, the land life that uses it, it's, everything plays a part.
Do you see dredging in the future, Mike? Or is that part of this?
Well, I think that's, I think dredging is an option to remove that silt layer and get it back down to the bottom elevation that the pond is supposed to be. Maybe, you know, introducing some more flow is another option, the simplest and cheapest option that we're going to try. You know, we're trying to stay away from chemical treatment and all those things. We're trying to do everything mechanical that we can right now. And I think that's, and like I said, folks, I know it's an inconvenience, it smells at times, it's ugly, but it's, it's for the health of the, of the pond itself. So, unfortunately, like I said, what's occurred upstream has really affected us downstream.
I have to comment that Counselor Grady took that problem and tried to, or is an attempt in, in the process of, I should say, trying to find a cheap, low-end mechanical solution. He had me out there looking at a pump and I guess now we're going, the concern is, you know, I said, well, you got a big pump here, you're going to have to cut the wheel or, now I guess Denny, Denny Zach said that we can possibly put in a VFD and slow it down. Right now, it's a, you know, it's a huge capacity for that pump, it'll turn it into a whirlpool if you let it go, it's 1,000 GPM, so we've got to get, that capacity's got to be reduced by, and I think it's going to require changing the speed of the driver as well as an impeller trim.
So, we're going to try to mock it up and take a run at it and see what happens?
Yep, yep. And also, I think, on a much smaller scale of what Katie deals, what I think we should establish and delineate who was in our watershed for the pond there and just maybe inform them about what they're doing, letting their dog do or letting, whatever, if they're treating their lawns, it's going to end up in our pond.
You know, I know personally, I've been down there with Doug Kears from Saloon Water a couple, two, three times and he suggests dredging it out.
Yeah.
In the fall, you know, they're willing to help us out on that.
Yeah, that would, that would really make a difference. And then we could concentrate on water quality itself and, you know, maybe some of the weed-eating fish that can go in.
I know, I used to have summer help go out there and row boats and harvest. I'm sure that, that, you know, it's probably hard to find somebody that wants to go out there row and cut weeds.
Well, one of the problems is the bottom is filled up with so much silt that when the sunlight hits it, it just grows it really quick.
Yeah, it's too shallow and it's warm.
At some point, you can walk, almost walk across it.
But rest assured, everyone, we understand and we realize the importance of that park, specifically the pond in this conversation, to all of our quality of life and all the people who enter the city from that end.
A number of years ago, I remember the level was brought down and we actually put some equipment in there to clean it out and remove some of the silt.
It was five years ago, but we ran into some weather problems.
Yeah, yeah, it's got to be nice and frozen to...
Yeah, I know it's been too, actually too warm this past winter to get out there and put a piece of equipment out.
But hopefully a positive, like I said, is less one-legged ducks and hopefully they can survive.
Well, you got one turtle remaining.
Yeah.
If it's large enough, maybe the DPW could have, you know, turtle soup.
Thanks, Mike.
All right, thank you.
Counsel, your turn.
No offense to Jenny, but I'll wait for Doug for other business. When is Doug coming back?
He's due back this weekend.
Back this weekend, okay.
John, I see you sent us out a memo on a letter you just sent to Mr. Freeman, would you mind going over that?
Yeah, basically, it was at, I think, your inquiry regarding executive session.
Yep.
And as the letter stated, I think everyone received a copy. They're very efficient there. Two weeks later, I got the same letter with a different date, but the same context, but it basically says that when you go into executive session, you have to first of all specifically identify the subject matters that you are going into executive session for. And when you are in executive session, you cannot deviate from those items, it has to be restricted only to those items, that's it in a nutshell.
Very good.
And they've been very responsive. It was interesting, I had a matter last week and called the office and Bob Freeman answered the phone and we had a nice conversation.
Good, well, good, thank you for following up on that then.
Yeah, I have to comment about Bob Freeman, he's, it seems like he really takes that job to heart, he's always available, he'll return calls, everything, I mean, the guy's phenomenal.
He's the author of the legislation from day one.
He's the atypical state worker.
I have, Counselor Camaro asked that the city manager update counsel on the reorganization on the budget.
Yep.
Give details on the claims list, there was $30,000 to Bon Cheniken King, and report on the overtime since September 1st for the fire department. That's all I have.
Is that correct, counsel?
Yes.
Do we have a request for executive session?
As a matter of fact, we do, Your Honor, in that there will be two contract matters and one litigation and they should not be too long.
This time I entertain a motion for executive session, Counselor Camaro, seconded by Counselor Grady.
Counselor Grady?
Yes.
Counselor Camaro?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Rozika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye. We're in recess for executive session.